I think you are.
Say something again to me make sure we're hearing you, please.
If you want, it's more.
Pretty good.
That's pretty good.
Good. Try again.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
That sounds good.
I've got nine, two, and I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Executive Director Ross, can you take a role for us, please?
Thank you, Dr. Corr, President Corr. Chair, President Haley.
President.
Superintendent Horne.
Here.
Member Katniss.
Here.
Member Clark.
Here.
Dr. Clay.
Here.
Dr. Hagerman.
Here.
Member Kryvikas.
Here.
Member Meyerson.
Here.
Dr. Robbins.
Present.
Dr. Kryvikas on the floor.
Thank you so much. And I will start with my report, and it's a very brief one. I'd like to announce the appointment of Dr. Hagerman to the A to F Accountability Appeals Committee, and I do so with my thanks to Dr. Hagerman for willing to serve in that capacity. Thank you, thank you very much. Superintendent Horne, I know that you are in Washington, DC. I appreciate your flexibility in arranging to be with us here today. Do you have a report for us?
Yes, I'm at the Council of Chief State School Officers, which has three meetings a year. I do, I wanted to mention that I spent a morning, a very useful morning, at Helios Foundation, where they have massive amounts of data, and it's very, very well organized in order to be able to use it for decision making. And in going through it, we noticed that there were a few school districts in Yuma that performed academically far above what you would predict from their demographics. And when I asked if anyone had an explanation for it, it turned out they had a close relationship with the community college there, which is run by the chairman of our board. So I wanted to congratulate him on a lot of academic success for the K-12 schools there because of their relationship with the community college.
Thank you, Superintendent Horne. There's a little bit of magic going on in Yuma. Thank you, very much. Executive Director, your report, please.
Thank you, Dr. Corr, Superintendent Horne, members of the board. Two quick items on the executive director's report for today. One is just a quick update to the call to the public process moving forward. We, our members, our constituents that show up to speak and show up to via email virtually, this is a vital part of the process of being a board, being state board of education. And we are so thankful to those that lend their voice to the process. We are averaging, in my short time here, about 600 pages of emails of a meeting. And we had the deadline at Friday at noon, and it's just, that's a lot of emails to process and redact for my staff. So we're going to be moving that deadline back to Thursday at noon, so just one day before starting an April meeting. Wanted to make sure to announce that in this meeting to make it as transparent as possible. In no way will that impact public comment. Any comments that come in after that deadline, as they do now, will of course be added to the next meeting. So I wanted to update on that. And then, as you know, starting last month, I wanted to use a little bit of this time to spotlight some of the staff behind the scenes who made the great work of what possible. In particular, today, you are going to hear from Garnett Burns from our Investigation Enforcement Unit, and she's going to talk about the process for investigating misconduct issues and what that looks like. And I wanted to highlight three members of the staff that were behind the scenes for that very important work. So Dawn Sola-Rong, the Administrative Assistant for the Enforcement Actions Unit. She supports Garnett. She is assistant managing case files, redacting sensitive information. She sets up a professional practice advisory committee, manages an unbelievable amount of case files, does it with real aplomb, and is an unbelievably dedicated person. And her, and actually, all three of the folks, I'm going to talk briefly about everything they do every day for their kids. And I want to really emphasize how thankful we are for them. Wendy Frey-Fusstaff is the Administrative Assistant for our investigative unit. Wendy's role is support the investigative unit and its investigators. She manages the fingerprint clearance card notifications from the Department of Public Safety, and she handles thousands of incoming requests. In fact, she has processed over 4,000 in the last year alone. And so that is an unbelievably important role as folks come in to get their fingerprints clearance cards. The schools need to know if they've been flagged for discipline issues. And then Stephanie DeJovin, sorry, Stephanie DeJovin, she's the Administrative Assistant for the investigative unit, and she supports the investigative unit with scrubbing files, reaching out to other agencies to obtain court records, to answer emails, phone calls. The investigative unit are made up primarily of former law enforcement, and they have dedicated their lives to protecting people, but especially protecting kids. And they could not do their great work without Wendy, without Stephanie, without Dawn. And I just want to make sure that those folks always get a shout out because, again, their work impacts kids, impacts teachers in schools that must go away every day. But that was it.
Okay, thanks, Sean. And thank you for highlighting the amazing work being done behind the scenes. Well done. So I will move us then on to the call to the public. This is the time for the public to comment on items on today's agenda, not on today's agenda or the consent agenda. As referenced earlier, we have a number of folks who want to speak to us today on, I suspect, a number of topics. It's super, I'll speak on behalf of the board. It's super important that we hear from you. I know that your voice impacts us, impacts our thinking and our direction. We want to hear from you all. There's a number of you who want to speak to us at various times today. So I would ask that you please do limit your comments to two minutes so that everyone, everyone can be heard. And please, Les, I've always been impressed during my, what, almost seven years on this board, that people can come up and speak passionately on an issue and not have it denigrate down to personal attacks. And let's make sure we keep that spirit today. Voice your opinion and let's refrain from any overly personal attacks, which I think diminishes the message at that point. So with that, Sean, or Director Ross, have we received any requests to speak for this particular call to the public?
President Corr, Superintendent Horne, members of the board, we have, I'm actually going to announce the person who's up and then the next two folks, because we do have some folks waiting in our overflow room on the third floor. We want to give them time to get down to make sure they can provide a piece of comments. Up first will be Wendy Maldonado, and then Kristin McAfee, and then Mesol Garcia.
Fantastic. Wendy? Again, if you're in the overflow room upstairs and you hear your name either as next or on deck, kind of make your way down, but maybe Wendy's not here with us yet.
We can have Kristin McAfee if she's in the room, start, and then we can go to Wendy if she's down, comes down.
Fantastic, yeah, absolutely.
How about Mesol Garcia?
What? Oh.
Oh, there we go. Oh, Christian, I'm so sorry. I read that. This is Christian McAfee. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Fantastic, the floor is yours.
All right, so thank you, board, and thank you for having me. I want to say this is a good meeting.
Yeah, please come in, yeah.
Okay, so, so I'm here to help with the teacher shortage. So I'm Mark the best seller of office, right? So millions online and working real estate. And it kind of reminds me of McDonald's, right? That's how I think the state should look at itself from a franchise perspective. I think you ought to do a cool job of creating regulation, but the question is, are you playing offense, right? Phoenix Suns hired Kevin Durant for a reason, right? It's for him to go out there and play offense, right? It's not necessarily for the defense, right? So when I look at the social media of the Board of Education or Department of Education, I think we're not playing offense, right? And that's, that's the problem with the teacher shortage. It's because we have to play offense, right? So what that means is having the best brand and market. If you look at the Army, right, what's their slogan? Army strong, right? And people are willing to put themselves on the line for the Army. So, you know, where is that for the Board of Education, Department of Education, right? When was the last time they posted? And these are important questions. And so when I look at that, my mark, I'm back. It's like, you know, we have worked on it. I mean, it's rumors, too, which is good, but how do we feel about the classrooms, right? With great teachers. Now, I've been in those classrooms, and not great teachers, but there need to be more. So I would like to have a meeting with the Board of Education, Department of Education, health conditions, because it's not going to stop it. We don't have good branding in our market, because it's going to continue. So that's why I'm here, and I'm looking forward to helping in any way I can.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Corr, Superintendent Horne, members of the board, Wendy Maldonado. Mesol Garcia.
Good morning. My name is, good morning, President Corr, good morning, Superintendent Horne, members of the board. My name is Mesol Garcia. I am a proud veteran, eighth grade educator, teacher, and currently elected as president of the Arizona Education Association. I'm here today to ask you and join in a chorus of people making public school educators a priority again in this state. Community leaders, business leaders are trying to come together to address the educator shortage. For three years now, we have seen a continued increase in public misinformation and openly disrespecting of public schools and educators who serve our very, very, very important students. Two weeks ago, at three governing board meetings simultaneously, we saw continued attacks on our schools, important, and more importantly, on our educators. So much so that there was a threat of physical attack on one of our members. As a union, we have three main things that we fight for: wages and benefits, working conditions, but most importantly, respect. Over and over, we have seen the numbers increase, and most recently, we saw the numbers go up to 3,000 open positions for public school educators. When the reporters called me to ask for my comment and asked if I was shocked, my immediate reaction was no. Here, we hear from educators every day who are choosing to learn, to leave this profession out of heartbreak because of the way that they feel: neglected, targeted, and disrespected. The continued politicalization and misinformation being spread is impacting our profession. We all know that the relationship between our parents is sacred. We email, call, and meet with parents every single day. We rely on this relationship to meet the needs of our students. There are policies in place where parents can reach out when they have issues, again, by email, or phone, showing up at the school, principal, school board meetings. Recently, with a hotline that was released, we saw more educators become fearful walking into their school, not knowing what was going to be called upon without them even having a chance to speak to it. This attack is unnecessary and harmful, and I'm here to ask you, as members of the state board, to join us in being laser focused in ensuring that educators do not leave this profession, but more so to call for the release of the hotline. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Corr, Superintendent Horne, members of the board. Next, we have Casio Savarino, followed by Andrea MacIntosh.
Good morning, Superintendent Horne, board members. Thank you for the opportunity, giving me an opportunity to speak to you on behalf of public schools, teachers, administrators, employees, students, and parents. My name is Casio Savarino. I'm a retired teacher of 34 years. My father, wife, daughter, sister, and son are all involved in public education as teachers. At the meeting, last meeting we had here, it was supposed to be a week celebrating Arizona public schools for the entire week. Personally, I was dismayed at the fact that the board and its members spend more time thanking its administrative assistants than they did our public schools, teachers, staff, parents, bus drivers, employees, and students. We're also taking issue with the statement Superintendent Horne made regarding the nation watching Arizona because of its voucher program. I think the nation's eyes are on us because we're 47 in public school funding, have some of the largest class sizes, largest ratio of students to counselors, and have the worst teacher retention problem in the nation. All of it because of the dismal manner in which our state finances our schools and the manner in which we treat our professional teachers. This leads me to today's topic, which is the newly instituted, I call it the snitch line, to allow parents to tattle on their students' teachers for politically motivated reasons in an act of intimidation and disrespect. In each school and district, there is a manner for parents to present problems with teachers, classes, and address them accordingly. This board's current effort dismisses those and usurps them and removes local control in lieu of their own process. This effort is a typical waste of money to solve a problem that doesn't exist. As an adjunct political science college instructor and a retired teacher of Advanced Placement U.S. History and Advanced Placement U.S. Government and Dual Enrollment Government, we categorically state that the boogeyman critical race theory is not being taught in K-12 schools. What is being taught is real history, politics, critical thinking exercises where students provided information, choose a position, and defend it with facts. These efforts may not always make students comfortable, but thinking and being presented with new information and listening, reading others' points of view.
I'm going to, I'm going to cut, I'm going to ask you to stop there just so we can adhere to the two-minute limit. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Corr, Superintendent Horne, members of the board. Up next, we have Andrea MacIntosh.
Good morning, board members. I would like to speak today on the information that was leaked, all the data that was released from multiple families at the hands of ADE. Are you all aware of what I'm talking about? Superintendent Horne, are you aware of what I'm talking about? I asked, and thank you, Jenny, for getting ahold of people to get that information taken down once parents contacted you. That's the only way we had to contact somebody. For those who are not aware, multiple families, private information was released at the hands of Christina Curso onto this board member's, this board meeting's agenda. I don't know if those families have yet been contacted officially by ADE informing them of their rights, but it is a violation of FERPA in the very least. I would ask that item number 3C, where they are asking for these accounts to be referred to the Attorney General's Office, that they be sent back to ADE and have it be wiped away. Have these families have a chance to dispute it. That's the least that could be done, given the fact that all of their information, multiple families' private information, was released. I also find it very odd that in the last board meeting, Christina Curso said, "Well, I don't know where any of the files are for the quarterly reports," yet she was able to dig up multiple families' data to have their accounts turned over to the Attorney General's Office. Again, I just ask, board, that you take this into consideration and refuse to send it to the Attorney General unless the proper process has been completed.
Thank you, Mary.
President Corr, Superintendent Horne, members of the board. That concludes the first call to the board.
Thank you, Executive Director Ross. Then I will move us on to the consent agenda, where we have items 3A through F. Is there, does any board member have a desire to move one of any of this, or can we take it as a, as a group?
I actually pulled item 3C for the consent agenda, or I would like to play it, please. Thank you.
Any other board members? We have removed 3C. Anyone else? Okay, then I will seek a motion to approve items 3A and B and 3D through F. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Member Katniss, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Clay, thank you. Any conversation, discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda items 3A and B and 3D through F, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. And I was prompted to remind the folks joining us virtually, but you've all done it anyway during votes, just be sure to have your camera on. I appreciate that, but you, you didn't need the prompting, you had them on. So with that, we have pulled item 3C. Member Clark.
Thank you. So first and foremost, I do want to thank the ESA parents that reached out to me last week in the evening to let me know that the agenda item that had been populated in Simley, which is where all the agenda items live, that was populated by the Department of Education, did have personal and private information related to those ESA account holders who were being referred to collections. Thank you, Dr. Corr, and thank you so much, Director Ross. The State Board of Education did reach out that evening, Director Ross did reach out that evening to every single one of those parents, because it was like eight or nine o'clock at night, to make sure that they knew that what had happened and that their information had been, that their information had been put incorrectly into the public agenda. The questions I have, because I'm not sure if the process, I'm a big process and procedures person, I'm not sure if the process was followed related to notification of those account holders, which is required. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we can get clarification on that before we go ahead and refer those cases, Director Ross.
President Corr, Superintendent Horne, members of the board, we do have ESA staff from the Department of Education. I don't know if they'd be willing to come and address the notification and procedure for those families.
Yeah, please. So the question again, Member Clark, is?
Yes, were all of the rules followed as far as notification of those families, that their accounts were up for collection?
Yes, that's number, President Clark, remember Clark, yes, that happened all before the adoption of the court.
Could you remind us again what that process is for board members who might not be familiar?
Well, it's quite a lot. I don't have all the details, because I don't have them memorized, but I do know that we go through the process of lots of notifying them. The process before, especially the ones that are in writing, those are all documented in simply, you can look them up, or not simply anymore, it's like with your department, with your, with your board. But we added one more process, which was a telephone before we referred them. So out of those phone calls, we didn't receive any phone calls back to be able to have that conversation with them. However, when we have to just speak to the process, when we uploaded our staff, as always prepared all of those files the same way we do all of the time, the one staff member who's responsible with those uploaded everything to Simley as directed, that's what we were trying to do. We were only told after the fact, so we did not make those public. We uploaded it simply to the non-public site. And then what happens after that is the, we were told that actually a tracker sheet, an Excel sheet normally gets uploaded, and the actual documents go to an email to the staff. That's not something that we knew about, and we were, did our Simley training through some of those on the executive team. So we didn't know that that's not the way it goes along. We got those documents, they were not public. It was only after the action of the state.
So you did speak on the phone to all of those parents?
No, we called them, we called them. And so nobody, prior to us referring to them, referring them, we did not speak with any of them. So that's going to be some process over. Now, after I received that email, I didn't want to call them that lady or we saw her the next day, and we only reached one. And one person who wanted to dispute, and which I was very happy, very happy that we found out. We have looked at that account, and what she said is nothing documented, that she was, this particular case was not in a public school, so referring, continue.
Thank you. And then, thank you so much. Director Ross, could you clarify? Because I want to make sure that there's clarification around the process procedures and what they were trained on, because I don't believe this was the error of the State Board of Education.
President Corr, Superintendent Horne, members of the board. So the process by which collections are uploaded has been in place for quite a while. The Excel spreadsheet that Executive Director Curso referred to is uploaded into Simley. The zip file that contains the private information is sent separately to board staff. The, you know, the department is new and, you know, new administration, and so there, you know, may have been, I knew as well, so maybe I did not clarify that as well. We have since, however, spoken to Director Curso, to her staff. One of the staff members, I think, had been present for a while, and this has been the process. So we've helped clarify that process so that personal information is not uploaded through Simley. Simley is the mechanism that the board uses to build its agenda. And so we had a great meeting with the ESA staff to help clarify. We added some procedures on our end as well to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And as you said, I, you know, I was, I was horribly embarrassed that this happened, and I followed each of those families that night. I followed up the, one of the families that Executive Director Curso was referring to. I followed up with her the next day. Her question was more about collections. I was able to get her in touch with Executive Director Curso to help that be rectified. So we've implemented new processes, and we're communicating more effectively.
And just to clarify, Director Ross, that evening, were you able to reach all of the parents?
I was not able to speak directly to all of the parents. I was able to reach five families, six families. I was able to reach the majority of them. Those that I didn't reach, I left a message, I called back the next day, and then eventually spoke to, oh, there was only one, and I, Executive Director Curso and I discussed this, there was one family, the person's voicemail box is full, and we tried, between the two of us, we tried calling several times, and, and there was no sort of way to reach them. So that person, we did not.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda item 3C. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Member Haley, thank you. Do I have a second? Second, Member Katniss, thank you. Any further conversation, discussion? Hearing none, cameras on, folks, all in favor of approving consent agenda item 3C? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion, motion passes. We'll move on to item four, call to the public. And once again, this is the time for the public to comment on items on today's general session. We do have a number of you who want to speak to us, and we're, again, excited to hear from you, but that means we will have to limit you to two minutes. And my scripture says, Director Ross, have we received any requests to speak? I suspect we have, and less than. I suspect we have and, and let's, then let's get that started.
His instincts are correct. For Superintendent, Board. First, we have Andrea McIntosh, followed by Bryson McIntosh, and then Jennifer Nuret.
We meet again.
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to address the handbook that has been turned in. One of the points I want to make. I appreciated all of your input at the last meeting where you encouraged the Executive Director to seek parent feedback on the handbook. Unfortunately, that was not done. The handbook that you were submitted did not have any parent feedback in it. It had, in fact, non-parent feedback from AFC, the American Federation for Children, I believe it is. And some problems I have with that and why I'm going to ask that you reject this handbook and send it back to have actual parent feedback put in. Is there many things in it that are against the law? For instance, the application, the information under I lost the statute, darn it. ARS 152401.01. There is specifically under point oh one a statute that says does not otherwise qualify for an Arizona empowerment scholarship account pursuant to this chapter. The current application that's on the website has only universal applicants. It even lists military families under universal applicants. They aren't subject to the enrollment requirements. Another problem I have is the special education evaluation. Christina Purso sent out multiple emails, one dated 1/25/23. Special education evaluation for special education students. We are now accepting private evaluations. The problem with that is she is not doing it within the limits of the law. She is taking private evaluations that have already been completed and having them submitted. I'll send all this information to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President, Board, Superintendent, Board. Up next, we have Bryson McIntosh.
First, let me start by saying thank you for allowing me to speak today and allowing accommodations for me. My name is Bryson McIntosh. I'm a 14-year-old student on the empowerment scholarship accounts. If this draft handbook gets accepted, I'm concerned about my inability to access my scholarship funding. I feel like Christina Purso is trying to push her own political and religious agendas by abusing her power as the Executive Director of the ESA Department. I would like to bring to your attention several concerns regarding the draft handbook up for review. Yes, there are many changes in this draft handbook that need to be made. Changes in the statute when HB 20 and 53 passed, but there are, that there are numerous unsolicited changes. And today's agenda states the board shall limit substantive changes to the handbook to once every three years. The board may approve changes to the handbook more frequently than every three years to conform and comply with changes to statute or this article or board discretion. Once adopted by the board, the handbook shall be posted on the department's website. If you just simply go into Microsoft Word and compare the draft handbook and the current handbook, it shows that there are 1,940 changes, which is very substantial. She took out the supplementary materials section, which is approved expense under Arizona revised statute 1524024E. She took out the chapter on class wall virtual accounts. I do fully support ADE to stop contracting with class wallet unless they majorly update their system as there are many flaws in their system. But why is she getting rid of the class wall when she has not found another provider? On page 53, she has listed the categories included on the list are educational materials, but approximately one week ago, she completely changed the categorizing class wallet, which does not include educational materials. Why has she completely changed categories without notifying parents? There are no page numbers in her draft. Her draft is only available in English and not Spanish or an accessible version, which is fairly illegal. She should not consider parent feedback when drafting this handbook. In fact, there was, it has been rumored that there was feedback from AFC, the American Federation for Children. She has violated many laws, including but not limited to FERPA, IDP, numerous Arizona administrative codes, the Constitution and FAIN. She has no continuing education higher than her high school diploma. She has no experience in education, special education or special ed law. She got this job purely because she is a lobbyist. I strongly believe she is trying to make the program for all these private schools and all these private schools only. Considering these factors, as you've mentioned, I ask that Christina Purso be removed from her position effective immediately. And at the very least, you reject this draft handbook.
Thank you. President, Board, Superintendent, Board. We have Jennifer Nuret, followed by Susanna Anderson, followed by Stacy Brown.
Brett's in support with you?
I did. Hello, I'm Jennifer. My children have been recipients of ESAs for a few years now. Empowerment scholarship accounts, scholarships that allow me to purchase educational materials and activities to homeschool my children. Mrs. Purso is making this hard for me to do as she continues to break SVE rules, sending us weekly emails with change after change, emails. Curriculum as defined by you, the SVE, is a course of study for content areas or grade levels, including any supplemental materials required or recommended by the curriculum. However, Mrs. Purso has taken it upon herself to add words like formal curriculum with scope and sequence under the guise of aligning with the law. It's already aligned with the law. She's making it harder for homeschooling families to purchase educational materials. My special needs child doesn't benefit from a formal curriculum, neither does her sister. They learn from me teaching the concepts while they use hands-on materials. We are also, we also now have to attest to teaching our children at home for every supplemental purchase we make. We've already agreed to follow the rules in our contracts. Another SVE rule says the department shall treat similar expenditures by similarly situated account holders in the same manner. However, her staff will approve some orders and deny others for the exact same material. She took down the allowable expenses database required by SVE rules and replaced it with a broad list open to interpretation. She stopped issuing debit cards. Her excuse for this one, fraud. There are procedures to handle fraud in the statutes, SVE rules, our contracts. We are well aware of what happens if we commit fraud. It doesn't say stop issuing debit cards to new recipients. I ask that you hold Mrs. Purso and her department accountable to following the rules, the laws and the procedures in the handbook, as is also expected of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President, Board, Superintendent, Board. Up next is Susanna Anderson, Stacy Brown, Kevin Jemmerroy.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to say a few words. I am here as a home educator in the state of Arizona of 17 years. During this time, I've been very involved in the homeschool community, both in Arizona as well as nationwide. I have brought with me a lot of friends that I'm acquainted with through other homeschool groups in the state, activities that we do together, and we didn't want to take the board's time, but all the people are standing up and more than hundreds of others in groups that we're active with, agree with this message that I am here to share with you, and that is we are incredibly thankful for the ESA program as it is. In fact, it is Mrs. Purso directly who convinced me to trust the ESA program as a home educator. This is our first year on the program because home educators are typically people that are independent, self-reliant, and they are not born to the state to support the educational choices because they're usually strings attached. It was in a video that I saw on YouTube that Mrs. Purso put out this summer when she was just a fellow homeschool parent that gave me the confidence to look into the program. And I was happy with the previous administration, but I have had nothing but great things to say of the new administration. Some of the complaints that have been addressed, I think, are unfounded. I think some of them are based in fears that things might happen and take a certain direction. I have not found that to be personally true. I was starting to doubt myself about the new administration just based on things I was reading online. And after attending an in-person meeting, I truly believe that Superintendent Horn and Director Purso are true to their mission statement of empowering parents to give their children the best education possible, and I think they have provided the tools for that. I find the allowable list by category incredibly generous. There are literally tens of thousands of items that ESA parents are able to easily purchase without having to do attestations or scope and sequencing curriculum. That's only for questionable items. Anything that's outright educational is easily covered. I personally have seven students in the program. I speak for hundreds of us. I personally, of my seven students, tens of thousands and plenty, not a single transaction has been called into question or involved. So I want to say I am very happy with the ESA administration. Thank the State Board of Education for making this program possible. It is a first in the nation and we as a very thankful for it on our have nothing but goodness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Brown, Kevin Jemmerroy, and Michelle Iba.
Morning, how are we? I come before you today as a homeschool parent, not only representing myself, but 42 other homeschool families whose children are currently involved in ESA. These families have all provided me with feedback that they would like me to share because these families whom educate their children, many could not be present today because they're educating their children, right? They want me to take time today to show appreciation to you all and to Christina Purso and Superintendent Horn. Thank you. I wanted to thank each of you for your time and commitment to parents. Also, thank you to ESA Executive Director Christina Purso and to your staff for taking the time two weeks ago to engage with families through your virtual and in-person seminars. You and your team alleviated stress across the board and questions for a number of families provided a full and better picture of how the ESA program functions. Families came out of that week feeling more confident in the current ESA program along with what the future holds. Many parents have requested these seminars continue on a regular basis if possible. Parents are appreciative of the increase in staffing on phones and are looking forward to the projected timeline of the ESA Department being fully stacked here in April. Many families are holding on to hope that the vendor payments, marketplace purchases, pre-approvals and reimbursements will be completed in a timely manner when staffing is complete. We are completely understanding that this program is growing rapidly and that with that, of course, comes extra work and with a staff with this thing being understaffed, that's, that's a difficult, difficult thing to overcome. This will always, this will allow much ease and availability to educate our children along with alleviating the financial burden that reimbursements are currently holding on for so many families. As a personal note for myself, I want to thank the board for your commitment to the children of Arizona and for upholding the provision of a fair and equitable ESA program for our children and future generations of children. And I'm just going to add one point. I'm going to go off script here a little bit. I'm going to tag on to what woman before me said. The loud voices that you hear, they are not the majority of families. Okay, there are a majority of families who are scared to come up and speak out of fear of harassment and out of fear of being publicly shamed. And so I want you to know that those of us who are here today who are speaking positively about ESA, we are not the minority. And we are brave and we're coming forward for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kevin Jemmerroy, Michelle Iba, followed by Belia. We don't have a last.
Kevin, please go ahead.
Good morning, members. My name is Kevin Jemmerroy and I'm a universal ESA parent and father to two twice exceptional boys. I'm here today to share our ESA success story. My hope is to offer a different perspective on the program than many others that you've heard from or where you're from today. Let me begin by offering some background. I moved my family from Seattle to Scottsdale in August of 2020 after Washington's Governor Jay Inslee proclaimed that it was unsafe for any child to go to school in the fall. That's the school reopening guidelines he announced for the strictest of the nation, eight times stricter than even California's. We initially enrolled our older son at Scottsdale Public Schools, but quickly pivoted to a local private school due to Scottsdale delays in reopening. Within a couple of months, a startling new school, her son's first grade teacher informed us he wasn't learning to read as quickly as others in his classroom. She suggested we seek out a reading evaluation with the hope of pinpointing a source of the issue. The reading evaluation was administered at a local private clinic and the scores came back all across the board. He was the fifth percentile among category in the 97th. The clinic's director referred us to a local neuropsychologist for additional diagnostic tests. That testing revealed that our son has, was gifted and has mixed dyslexia. The neuropsychologist's number one recommendation is that we place our son in a private school where, with small class sizes and individualized attention. He also recommended that we proceed with intensive dyslexia intervention. And we took the advice and by the end of first grade, our son was reading proficiently at grade level. When the universal ESA expansion went into effect, we quickly enrolled him and accepted his ESA contract a few years later. He would not have qualified under the old ESA criteria since he didn't spend a sufficient amount of time in public school and his testing wasn't done through the school district. When it came time to use our ESA funds, the process was quick and easy. Our school was already registered and approved us as a vendor as a class wallet and we were able to easily upload our tuition statements to request payment for Q1 and Q2 of this school year. The school received our funds within 10 business days, which reduced our upcoming tuition payment significantly. While the ESA award only covers a portion of our son's tuition, it definitely makes a positive and helpful impact on our family's budget. We were also excited to learn from the director's recent email that his private dyslexia diagnosis would be sufficient to qualify for a special needs. We are grateful not to have to pull our son out of school for another battery of testing only to confirm what we already know. If you give me just 30 more seconds, I have.
I really can't do it. I appreciate the message, Kevin, just we're, we're, we're trying to accommodate everyone here today.
Maybe if there's additional time at the end, you'd let me.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
President, Board, Superintendent, Board. We have Michelle Iba, followed by Belia, again, no last name, and then Maria Gernbaum.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Michelle Iba and I am a Mexican or Hispanic mother of two daughters at ESA. This program has been a blessing for my daughters because they've been able to receive the proper education that they really, really need. And that the public school system has failed to provide for good children and that's that's a fact. So my daughters need a lot of help and I have the power to decide what's best for them. Who knows better than the parents what their children need and how they learn? When I was a child and I arrived in this country, I wish I had the opportunities that my daughters have at the moment for a better education and opportunities that we have in ESA. I am here to, to speak on behalf of our children, not on behalf of the system or anybody. I'm speaking on behalf of our kids because we're the ones that have our kids at home or in school. We're the ones that live with them. Not the teachers, not anybody else. So I am currently homeschooling. My kids also receive therapy and have teachers and tutors who give them classes one-on-one. My oldest daughter has speech delay and has had a lot of difficulties in school. My oldest daughter, um, I'm sorry, but thanks to ESA, we can pay for therapists in private classes. Now my daughter is learning, regaining her self-confidence and thriving. I think we all have the right for a better education and favors shoes wherein how our children are going to be educated, regardless of social and economic status, or regardless of if I'm Mexican or American, you know. And also I just, I just want to say that I think Christina Purso has been a great job at the moment with whatever she has or whatever she had left from previous administration. And that she's doing a great job. Thank you.
Sure.
And then Maria Gernbaum, and then Lynn Fox and Ray.
Belia, do we have Belia here with us? Believe if you're upstairs, make your way down. If not, we'll move on.
Believe if you're upstairs, make your way down. If not, we'll move on to the next one, Sean. And so Maria Gernbaum.
Thank you so much for having me speak today. I have twin seventeen-year-old daughters, some who are going into music education. The ESA program has helped us afford one of my clothing music lessons, not YouTube. They've basically been teaching themselves for a while. Instruments, so they don't have to share. Classes like community college, like in music theory, so they can get a head start on their degree. Most importantly though, I'm a law-abiding citizen and it's important to me that this program, the House of Cards, will still work. Since I have joined the program, I have seen constant improvements. Every week I get an email that helps me understand the problems that are being addressed. I know that the program was a mess before, excuse me, so to go over. And the emails detail policy clarifications, all the ways in which I can find support. Information about virtual meetings, in-person meetings, helpful links, like a link to the list of acceptable items and unacceptable items that we can purchase. And honestly, everything I need to make sure that I follow and understand the parameters of the program. I want this program to be successful, not just for my family, but for all innocent families. I see the integrity and the common sense that has come to the ESA program under Christina Perso's leadership. I appreciate that Christina is protecting this program and dedicated to explaining every step of their processes to ESA families. I know a lot of people are skeptical of government programs because of the transparency that we never got. I know that this has been extremely stressful for some parents to see the changes that have come, but I appreciate the fact that people are allowed to buy barbecues and jewelry and things that I think, you know, might be a little frivolous, right? In the name of education. And I appreciate the fact that there is somebody with common sense looking at these things, open to hearing from parents all the time, their feedback about the program, how they can improve. Right? And that, you know, I know there's a lot of people who don't want change, right? Because change can be scary, but change can be really good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Fox and Ray, followed by Kirsten Galindo, and then Christopher Lindahl.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Fox and Ray. Thank you so much for being here today with us and listening to what we have to say. I am an ESA parent, a free student, who've been on the program since 2017. Like most, I'm here to talk about this handbook. You know, I feel like the ESA programs fall apart. I feel like we were here just last year and spent three months addressing these same issues, but addressing it again today. And I feel like after the last meeting, I thought we had a little bit of hope, like a little bit of hope that you guys had asked the department to make sure they took parent input. However, the draft of the handbook that I saw didn't have any parent input. It had input from the AFC, you know, and the AFC is a political lobbyist group. They're not family, they're not parents. And I think that we need to be heard as parents. My children use ESA as home educators. I've used it as a public school parent in the past, but I choose to home educate my child. The restrictions that are put on the handbook now will stop my children from getting certain services. I should not have to worry about going to chase down a physician to get a letter to get my child the services that they need. I mean, my child, I have two that have IEPs. It should not be up for debate. It should just be, I've submitted things I needed to do. I shouldn't have to jump through hoops, write a letter that says, I attack that I'm going to be using this item to home educate my child. And that's what they're asking us to do. Now, the newest thing is I need to send them formal curriculum. So I have to sit down and take time from my busy day from a seven-year-old, a eleven-year-old, a twelve-year-old to write formal curriculum to the, to send to the department to verify I need ABC block or whatever it is, you know? I shouldn't have to do that. It's taking valuable time away from my children. Being here today is another thing I have to leave, to be here today, to fight for what's right for them. I understand there's change and I understand that there's going to be change, but we, the town holders, need to be heard, not the political lobbyists out there that are trying to run this department for us. That's all I have to say today. Thank you all for doing, we have Jenny, thank you for getting this stuff down. We've got this family. We don't need our personal information out there.
Thank you.
Kirsten Galindo, Christopher Lindahl, and then Denise Sabios.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm here today because I want to let you know that I'm concerned about the new category of family consumption in the ESA handbook. I feel that this policy is very problematic for homeschool families and leads to a flawed decision-making process. The basic tenet of this policy is that items should be disallowed if they will be consumed by the family or shared in the home. I feel it's unjust to create a policy that has the potential to disallow any educational purchases that might be consumed by the family of homeschool ESA students. Can you think of an educational item that would not be consumed by a student's teachers and peers? That's basically what we're talking about with this policy. It has already called into question legitimate educational purchases, for example, gardening supplies. Why are we questioning whether or not gardening supplies are an allowable expense when the educational benefits of gardening are well-known and gardens are commonplace in public schools in our communities? It's because under the family consumption policy, the administration is forced to create a distinction between the home and school environments, a distinction that is completely artificial for homeschooling families. They are one and the same. This policy needs to be reconsidered and, and we need to consider how we can, if we're going to keep the policy, create checks that will ensure that homeschool families will be able to use funding to support all legitimate educational pursuits carried out in the homeschool environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Christopher Lindahl, then Denise Sabios, and then Harmony Lurley.
Good morning, President Corr, members of the board. Parents of students with high support needs are constantly being told, your child is not welcome here. Nowhere is that message so inescapable than within our education system. When you're told by the public education system that your child will have to be bused far from the closest school to their home due to their diagnosis, you are being told, your child is not welcome here. When you support your kids to all the testing and scrutiny for an IEP which is not followed, you are being told, your child is not welcome here. When a private school decides their behaviors are too difficult or the school isn't equipped to meet their educational needs, you are being told, your child is not welcome here. Now with the new ESA policies favoring optics over the legitimate educational needs of our students, again, we are being told that your child is not welcome here. The sweeping changes made to the program have been entirely focused on home educating parents. There are no absurd hoops to jump through for private schools receiving ESA funds. They don't have to prove that purchases made with an ESA fund are only used by that specific student. Private schools aren't submitting formal curriculum to the department to justify expenses. No, private schools are trusted with the management of these funds unconditionally. Superintendent Horn, bring back the detailed and consistently updated allowable items list that parents advocated for and has written into rules. Make sure that families who are in good standing always have access to a debit card which keeps the program equitable and workable. Dump the subjective notion of family consumption, which is nowhere in statute and applied based on imagined scenarios in the minds of people with no background in education, and stop requiring families with the least amount of time due to home helping students with the highest support needs to provide letters from therapists that they may not even have access to for associated goods they know their children will benefit from. This is not a school choice-friendly administration. This is a private school-friendly administration. And I hope that the loud applause from the cheerleaders that have stacked the room today do not cloud your judgment and hear the other voices that have filed many requests to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Denise Sabios, Harmony Lurley, and then Sandra Kirby and Owen Kirby.
Good morning. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. I always have trouble. My name is Denise Sabios Minor and I am here, as always, in representation of my community. My organization, Fathers News, we have thousands of families that are under our database that are very much interested in this ESA program. For almost ten years, let me be accurate, about seven, eight years, I started working with these families and introducing the ESA program to them after I was able to do dance, a performance here at the Capitol during the school choice celebration, the week celebration. I understood the leader of this program and I also understood that the community that is less beneficial, that less, that knows less about this program is my Hispanic community. And I'm also learning that the African-American community is also learning more about this program. There was that letter, newsletter written where it shows that seventy-nine percent of African-American teachers approve of ESA program. Over fifty percent of black parents approve of ESA program. My community in the Hispanic families, they are completely thankful. So I know there's so much politics and politics in attacks happening here today, but I'm not here to speak politics. I'm not here to attack the program or the department. I'm here to say thank you for standing strong, standing for the ESA program. And regardless what comes against you, continue to service this for my community because many parents, I myself, have four children that went to public schools, they did extremely well. But I myself, as a grandmother, had an experience with my grandchild that fainted during PE and nothing was done. My family was never notified. So there's issues that need to be solved within the public school as well. So if my family's choice, a better opportunity to have to a better education, a better school through ESA, I welcome that. And with that, I say thank you again.
Thank you.
Harvey Lurley is next, followed by Sandra Kirby, Owen Kirby, and Katie Viat.
Esteemed members of the board, ESA families signed a contract for the current school year. This contract has a parent handbook as a part of it. Though some of the things have changed with the new law, much of it remained applicable. Mrs. Perso has come in and upended the rules that the handbook provided for nearly fifty thousand families. Now, any email communication or anything she says in a public meeting supersedes the current handbook. She has decided that all who have come before, who have worked to interpret the law, did not know what they were talking about. And only she can make the program follow the law by these dramatic mid-contract, mid-year changes. This leaves parents paralyzed to know what will and will not be approved. And just when we think we have some idea of what is going on, a new email edit comes out and changes everything and it is applied retroactively. Parents' concerns are being swept aside. There have been a public outcry from over, with over seven hundred pages of emails sent to this board alone. And Mrs. Perso sent us an email saying that she received a quote, "few" emails. She has incorporated no parent feedback into the radically rewritten handbook. I am begging you to hear our concerns. Do not accept or strip down the interpreted version of the handbook. Insist that the program director follow the rules of this board, that the department shall treat similar expenditures by similarly situated account holders in the same manner. Approved for one is approved for all. Make her follow the SBE rules to establish and maintain a database of approved and disapproved expenses. Not a simple list, but an actual database. These rules are here to avoid confusion and chaos, both which are reigning now. Ask her to slow down and support parents, not fight them.
Thank you.
President Corr, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next, we have Sandra Kirby, followed by Owen Kirby, Katie Viat, and Jane Griffin.
My name is Sandra Kirby and I'm an ESA parent to a special ed student that I home educate. I want to thank the board for this opportunity to speak regarding the handbook. I'm very concerned about the twenty-two pages that were cut from the handbook. It went from seventy-four to fifty-two pages and four thou, over four thousand words as well. This is substantial, in my opinion. And if Mr. Perso does not believe that this is substantial, I'm very concerned about that and how she interprets things. Something else, the handbook, actually she, she sent out an email about the disallowedness and inappropriate explicit material is not allowed. And I'm very concerned with how, again, inappropriate is interpreted by somebody who thinks that twenty-two pages cut from the handbook is not substantial changes. I'm a healthcare provider and, you know, what I consider appropriate sexual education for my teenager, you know, for a teenager, is far different than what I believe Mr. Perso believes is appropriate sexual education. And I, I believe that I should be able to teach my children the way I want to. And if the program is going to approve religious materials, because we, we let people, we let the parents decide what their kids should learn, then on the flip side, we should be able to let parents who want to teach their kids about proper sexual education or read one of the banned books, they should be allowed to. And I'm very concerned with what, where that's leading.
Thank you.
Okay.
President Corr, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Oh, okay. Thank you. Up next, we have Harmony Viat, Jay Griffin, and then Karen Gresham.
Hi, I'm Katie Viat. I'm a homeschooling mother. I've been on the ESA for about four years now, so I've had some experience. I have very round, well-rounded education for my kids. I do some stuff that people talk about that's kind of official and some free education, like free, just doing stuff like on my own. So I love ESA and I'm glad things are being done to protect the program. My son Sebastian was going to kindergarten in twenty-twenty. I knew he has speech problems and I needed help. I got in touch with the Roosevelt District in June. October is when I finally got my IEP. I told them that I had an education advocate and that's when they finally approved my IEP. It took them five months to evaluate my child. The system failed my child. I lost months of tutoring. With the new universal ESA, there is no waiting months when you know your child is failing. If I enrolled my kindergartner in the local public school, he would have been there from eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM with a mask on his face all day. A clear visor was going to be sewn into his mask over his lips. This was an acceptable compromise by the public school in my neighborhood. After waiting five months to get help, I think this was completely unacceptable. With an ESA-approved vendor, I was able to get a masked free speech help for my son. If it wasn't for ESA, he would have gotten, he wouldn't have gotten the help he needed. Now, three years later and using my funds with an approved vendor, my son's speech problems are almost completely gone going into second grade. I may be done, I may be done with additional tutoring in the summer. I have a daughter who failed kindergarten. With ESA funds, I was able to hire a public school teacher to come to our house every week and help her with her dyslexia. This teacher was a special tutor. She was able to just get to what my daughter needs to learn instead of waiting through the system to get approval for helping more, for the more help she needed. Now, I'm not saying the system for making payments in ESA is easy. I have struggled a bit and sometimes asking vendors to get approved has been difficult. I have struggled a bit and sometimes asking vendors to get approved has been difficult. But every single vendor that I've asked to be approved has been approved. Every single thing that I've asked to be approved has been approved. Now, it's not always been easy, but it has happened. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, President Corrigan, members of the board. Uh, next, we have Jay Griffin, followed by Karen Gresham, and then Julia Ivy.
Thank you, members of the board. Uh, my name is Jay Griffin. Um, I'm just trying to collect my thoughts, given all the chaos that I walked into today. Just the fact that I'm part of Ewing, Dapp, actually. Trying to participate in this meeting is difficult. My main concern, uh, today is in the last month since I spoke, uh, before the board at the last meeting, um, I addressed several, um, concerns and deficiencies and basically, and you've been hearing testimony from, from many parents who are, the ESA program is vital to the child's education. And many of them are suffering and they continue to suffer due to the failures of this administration to get a handle on the needs of this program and actually follow proper, public agency administrative. It's just, this isn't the way this is supposed to be done. If I were to have inducted my job in my twelve years, it was only part of the health services, it's a licensed team surveyor, I would have been fired. I would have been fired. Frankly, I'm, I'm kind of sick of seeing the program being run with this kind of chaos, substance and policies being issued that, that don't, they don't follow statute, they don't follow the new notifications, the emails being sent with information that hasn't even been aligned to a rule or a statute that they're supposed to be driving from. Meanwhile, parents are getting, they're not, either not getting the funding or the funding being cut off because class law doesn't work. And so, and meanwhile, special education kids, I mean, that whole, that whole area is being completely neglected as far as processes are concerned. So, um, I'm sorry that I can't be more specific and a little bit more clear in terms of what it is I'm trying to say. But overall, the theme that, in terms of technical assistance from the program that we've gotten, the theme is, is that things aren't being decided in favor of children. They're being decided in favor of protecting the program's integrity. But given the fact that there's been hardly any thought on, by the program in the past, I mean, from the Ozon Audit General themselves, I don't understand what this director is attempting to find other than promoting some sort of agenda from, from other outside interests that aren't, aren't what state administrative agencies are supposed to be. So, yes, I agree.
Uh, we have Karen Gresham, followed by Julia Ivy, Zavvi Rios, and then Kathy Hulks.
Good morning, President, Board members. My name is Karen Gresham. I'm an elected school board member and a school parent. So I'm here today only speaking for myself. Actually, I wanted to address the new, this new, uh, parent hotline implemented by the, um, Board of Education. Frankly, it's just a waste of resources. Our teachers are already feeling targeted. And what affects our teachers affects our students, which of course affects the whole, everyone in the whole state, um, eventually. So, in the district I represent, we encourage open and honest communication, uh, between our parents and teachers. They have great relationships because of that. We also, I guess, do most schools have a rigorous complaint process, including being able to do requests to speak at our public board meetings. So basically, this hotline is, is really unnecessary and, um, there's no reason for it. Our teachers are already under enough, uh, enough stress that did. Finally, I did want to say I noticed that the superintendent was on Fox News last week. It appeared to me that he's pushing a political narrative and this does not have the best interest of our students in mind or me, uh, to be in this spot, but it's.
Thank you.
President Corrigan, members of the board, Julia Ivy, followed by Zavvi Rios, Kathy Hulks.
Um, I just wanted to talk a few things, um, first, like a lot of the parents who expressed the universal parents, they're doing our ESA program. But I have two children that are special needs. Um, I have one child that is ASD three level. And, um, you might not understand some of the items that are done, what parents pick. Um, but those items can have a lot of educational purposes for special needs children. And the school district that I live in, at Maricopa, there's actually a special needs class that opened a cafe at their middle school, that the children have learned to use things like espresso machines and learn how to bake items and stuff like that. Um, I feel it's really important that all these questionable items, and I'm personally very upset with, um, Mr. Horn and with Mr. Akurso um, for bringing up some of these, what they deem as questionable education items. I feel it's extremely abus, in my opinion. I also have autism and, like, coming up and speaking to you guys about it is really hard. I, I have major issues and anxiety speaking in front of people. But I feel it's really important that you guys understand. I went to public school. If I did not have the parents I had, I would not have been able to accomplish things I have accomplished because my schools did not help me at all. My son, we joined the ESA program because my son was highest functioning level at his public school and they told him that he no longer could receive services. They told me he did not have autism anymore. My son is ASD three. So, the ESA program is really important for us and also, I feel it's not, families cannot, don't have access to it. Latino families, there's like almost nothing in Spanish, as well as on your guys' school boards' websites. It's hard to access things in Spanish. Families of hard-of-hearing individuals or parents that are deaf, it is really hard to access stuff, to access help, especially right now with the current help desk tickets being backlogged, all the way in January. How are those parents getting help? Um, they're having to access other public items to get the help they need. And I feel it's really important that you guys understand this.
Thank you so much.
Horn, members of the board, Zavvi Rios, Kathy Hulks. Kathy then?
Kathy.
Kathy is actually our last in-person speaker, so we'll be transitioning to virtual speaker now.
Good morning, President Corrigan, Superintendent Horn, and members of the state board. I ask you to reject the new ESA draft handbook. It was revised by Elsley Montenegro, who is the Arizona Implementation Director for the Special Interest Group, American Federation for Children, AFC. The ESA director was offered help to update the ESA handbook by ESA parents, including myself. In fact, I advised her soon after she was appointed that the handbook was the key to lay out good policies for the program in writing and get them set. She rejected parents' help and went to the American Federation for Children instead. ESA is a government program and it is unacceptable for it to be run by special interests. ESA parents have already experienced three months of chaotic policy changes back and forth. Policies need to be clearly explained in the ESA handbook, but they are not. Instead, this draft AFC handbook removes helpful information such as examples of therapies for disabled students and even page numbers. Mentions of the SVE rules for ESA are deleted. The rules for the ESA program say that the department shall develop a handbook in consultation with parents of children on the program. Agenda item five A for this meeting states that over fifteen hundred pages of parent input were sent by parents in just over three days. Yet the handbook was submitted to SVE with, quote, "no changes from feedback at this time." The ESA director refuses to accept parent handbook input. This is the opposite of empower parents. It is unknown why she is so beholden to special interest groups. The ESA handbook is unacceptable. It does not clearly explain how to use the ESA program. Reject this.
Interesting, you've created this point. How many, how many folks do we have, uh, virtually? Uh, we have twenty-seven, twenty-seven, you would as well. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm getting some signals from my colleagues that a quick break would be, would be appreciated. And I think I've got, uh, ten twenty-one. Can, can we take a, stick to a fourteen-minute break? Would that be okay to us?
And just to notify those who are virtual, Allison Hillister will be first, then Kelly, we don't have a last name, and then Allison will. Okay, thank you so much. We'll reconvene at ten thirty-five. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So it's having a blessing. And I know Christina Curso, uh, ten-plus years ago, in all the fields, uh, as a mother, as a professional, and I know, uh, you know, uh, people from, uh, from this team, and I really support ESA. And myself, as a Spanish teacher as well, I really see the need for kids to get better education, okay? That we have the choice to get, um, you know, our funds for ESA. So it's just wonderful, honestly, that we have the empowerment scholarship account. And that misunderstanding that we have, that money is not going to be taken away from public education. Um, just I would like that people will be more clear on that, on that little topic. So I appreciate your help, your support, and please keep our ESA alive. God bless you.
Thank you. Uh, President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, and next Stephen Harris. Stephen, you with us? So, uh, we are now transitioning to call to the public for, uh, virtual. Uh, first is Allison Hiller.
Thank you for joining us, Allison.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
We can. Thank you so much for being with us. Please go ahead.
You're welcome. Can you see me all right? I don't know if I'm angled correctly on video.
Um, no, we, we, I, I don't think we can, but that's, don't let, don't let that stop you. We're, we're interested in your message.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Um, good morning, members of the board. I am Allison Hiller and I am a parent to, to visually impaired students on the ESA program. We've been on the program for three years. I am totally blind myself and so is my husband. We homeschool using ESA and it's been a great experience for us to be able to use ESA. I am speaking today because of my concerns about the handbook. The biggest one being with no mention of a debit card. Some of us have children with very low incidence disabilities. There's less than one percent of the population that are blind or low vision, like my children, which means any company that we need to, um, get educational materials for them, like Braille materials, Braille transcription, and tactile materials, are usually very small companies that are unlikely to join any kind of, um, platform, uh, let's say just Class Wallet or any, uh, new platform going forward. And also, the platforms, Class Wallet is not accessible for us with our assistive technology. We don't know if a new platform will be accessible. Using a debit card has been essential for our family for two reasons. Three reasons. One, being that the small companies that serve these lowest disabilities are unlikely to join big, uh, payment platforms for education. Two, some of the materials related to my kids' disabilities are some of the most expensive, including Braille materials and low-vision assistive tech, meaning that paying for, via reimbursement, is completely beyond what our family and most families can afford. And three, because of the inaccessibility of the marketplace, we are unable to shop for materials. The marketplace on Class Wallet, for example, took accessible websites like Lakeshore Learning and Amazon that are accessible for us to use outside of the platform and rendered them inaccessible inside the marketplace platform. So for families like mine, being able to use a debit card is literally the difference between accessing our kids' educational funds independently and not. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next we have Kelly, we don't have her last name given, and then Allison Wilkes.
Hi, good morning. Could you hear me?
We can, Kelly. Please go ahead.
Hi, good morning, Superintendent Horn, Dr. Core, and, and, uh, members of the board. My name is Kelly. I want to introduce myself. We have been on the ESA program since two thousand and eighteen. There's not a public school in Pima County that can serve my child. Quarter three of last year, there were seven thousand ninety-four students in the special needs category. My call to action to you, board members, today is that you reject the proposed handbook. And my reasoning, and I've read plenty of others, that would be in agreeance on the public, um, comments that were submitted to you all, is that, um, well, what happened to the different therapies that special education students can use that are in the handbook? There are currently, in our current handbook, fourteen wonderful empowering therapies that we are able to use our ESA funds on, and I could not imagine navigating this program with a high-needs, special-needs child and not know that there's aquatic therapy, art therapy, equine therapy, hand therapy, music, occupational speech, recreational, social group therapy, RDI, so many more. And I personally take offense for all other seven thousand plus or minus students in the special education category that will not have this information. We are, we are yo-yoed around. Dr. Core, you said it correctly last month. Parents have been yo-yoed around. Not only parents in the ESA, but we fight from the moment when you have a special-needs child through many government agencies. It personally took me over five years to get support for my child outside of the ESA that gave us therapy, that gave us services to help my child. It is imperative, I implore you all, to not accept the handbook. I really ask the current administration, and I'm sure it's being done, but put a little bit, um, extra thought in how this empowerment scholarship accounts can actually keep, continue empowering kids with special needs. We were the founding category to get this program up going, and I think that we need to have these categories listed in this handbook so parents know that there's options for their children. Thank you.
Thank you. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next we have Allison Wilkes.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can, Allison. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the State Board of Education. Thank you for your service to our community and to all students of Arizona. I'm the parent of children who have different needs, and so they're educated in this state by both public school and an ESA scholarship, and I really appreciate the ability to decide what's fair and appropriate for each one of my children. Today I ask that you please reject the ESA handbook submitted for your consideration. I've sent extensive written comments, but some of my most important concerns I'd like to talk about today are as follows. In accordance with Rule R seven-two-one-five-zero-three, ESA parents were not distributed a copy of the handbook that clearly identifies changes to the prior handbook in a timely manner. Further concerning is that Esli Montenegro, Arizona Implementation Director for the American Federation for Children, provided extensive feedback on the redlined handbook with ADE. Of the extensive handbook edits submitted by Ms. Montenegro, I find the ones telling ADE and Director Curso to delete SBE rules, um, from the handbook the most egregious. Directives such as Delete R two-one-five-zero-seven, Use of Funds, The Department Shall Establish and Maintain a Database of Approved Expenses, negates the purpose of SBE rules which need to matter. Your time as a board spent creating them matters. Removing them and ignoring them is unacceptable. It's disappointing to see the current administration following in the footsteps of the previous one. AFC, AFC employees, lobbyists, and other special interest groups should not be providing feedback to ADE or Director Curso on the parent handbook. ADE failed to give parents opportunities to participate and give feedback. Last-minute meetings in which only one parent named Mary has access to questions is hardly collaboration. Director Curso continued to hold meetings throughout the week, knowing that parents could not actively participate in the Q and A. Further, ADE refused to turn on the chat that parents did have access to. Thank you for your focus on what is happening in Arizona education and not the rest of the nation. For your continued efforts to ensure the ESA program For your continued efforts to ensure the ESA program is not going backwards, I have faith in you, board, that you'll make the right choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next we have Sarah Blank, followed by Angelica Salinas Hughes.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
We can, Sarah. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, SBE board members. Thank you for your service and support of all Arizona students. I have three children. My oldest and youngest are ESA special education students. My middle child goes to his local public school. I want to say that we are incredibly grateful for the ESA program. You heard earlier that loud and dissenting voices are not the majority. The original ESA program was not created for the majority. It was created for students like mine who require customized education that meets their varied needs. I would like to say that many parents' concerns related to ADE and comments are not political or personal. As a parent, I am simply trying to meet and exceed my children's educational needs. As a special needs parent, I will always use my voice and fight for all of their needs to be met. Today I'm speaking to address the ESA handbook on the agenda. I am concerned that SBE rules and deadlines, including those for this handbook, are not being followed by ADE. These rules and policies protect our students and should be adhered to. I ask that you do not approve the ESA draft handbook. The handbook is only supposed to undergo substantive revisions every three years. Since it was heavily revised last year, this year's draft should only address statute changes. As such, new policies, interpretations of laws, and the removal of our financial vendor are inappropriate. Account holders need to know and understand how to use this program. All purchasing options should be described in the handbook, including the debit card. Account holders should also be aware of their rights and understand the rules and laws. Instead of collaborating with their customers, ADE collaborated with school choice lobby group, AFC, to revise and update the ESA draft handbook. Parents are the customers of the ESA program. We should be included as key stakeholders. I want to note that one of AFC's recommendations regarding the handbook was to remove SBE rules. This is not transparent. It does not empower parents, and it sure does not serve ESA customers. It is deeply concerning that ADE did not appropriately collaborate with parents on the draft handbook. As an ESA parent advisory committee member, it is my duty to represent all 50,000-plus ESA students. As such, I submitted my comments and suggestions, but as you see on the agenda, no parent feedback is included with this draft.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Up next we have Angelica Salinas Hughes, followed by Julie Bhat.
Executive Director Ross, Angelica Salinas Hughes does not join the meeting. If she does, I will let you know.
Thank you, Jessica. Up next we have Julie Bhat, followed by Wendy Van Lee.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can, Julia. Please go ahead.
My name is Julie Bhat and I'm an ESA parent. I manage two of the largest ESA support groups on Facebook. I spoke to you in person last month about the confusion and ambiguity, and I'm here again virtually to state nothing has changed. This doesn't mean that we aren't thankful, but we are being gaslit and so is this board. The director says only a few people are confused, but there were a series of information meetings held two weeks ago. Her stories and policies changed as the week went out, went on, however. I'm still fielding hundreds of questions in my groups about the new policies because our own HelpDust tickets go months unanswered. I don't want an answer on the phone that can change from week to week. I want a clear answer in writing. She says reasonable educational items found in a classroom are allowed, but is she looking at an elementary school classroom with crayons and Crayola watercolor trays or a high school art class with a potter's wheel and high-quality tubes of watercolor paints? Who is determining what's reasonable? The director or whatever employee happens to receive my request? Currently, there are orders for reasonable items sitting on hold for months, waiting for somebody at the department to decide. The director also repeatedly mentioned satisfying auditors. But why are public school districts praised when they post photos of their new playground equipment, school garden, or culinary arts program on Twitter, but an ESA student with a trampoline or grill is going to shut down an entire program? She says the handbook draft isn't supposed to contain substantial changes, but it changes, but it has changes after years of precedent and rules carefully put in place by this board. It also lacks the new policies and procedures shared in her information meetings and latest emails as recent as just three days ago. How can parents use funds appropriately without clear guidance or when it keeps changing? Thank you.
Thank you. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Up next is Wendy Van Lee, followed by Heather Roach.
Thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity to speak. I would guess that you can hear me or else you'd tell me you couldn't. I'm here today to talk about the teacher disciplinary or lack thereof. My child, and I'll refrain from using sexually explicit words. I, I'm not, I'm sure there's children in the room or whatever. I just want to be respectful. But a teacher in Liberty High School that my daughter had for a human physiology class chose to sexually explicit, chose to use sexually explicit words in front of the children, which that alluded my daughter to notify me to let me know what this teacher was saying in front of the classroom, which then alluded me to do more research and find inappropriate PowerPoint that she used that's on a program that apparently HR does not have access to. There's also handouts. And Department of Education, you will be receiving all of this in person in your office so that you can take a look at it. This teacher's contract was up for renewal. She was removed from the high school, so therefore I thought, okay, great. They've done what they needed to do. They're going to fire this teacher and show her zero tolerance. You are not allowed to talk like that in front of children. You're not allowed to administer the paperwork that you've administered. I thought, great, she's going to be, she's out. She doesn't need to be in front of children. Nope. The school district has renewed her contract and moved her on to an elementary school to teach in front of smaller age or younger-aged children, which has me highly concerned due to the sexually explicit content that the teacher chose to speak in front of the children. The story that my daughter told me was corroborated by several students when presented to the principal of the high school. So it's not like it's being made up. It's not, it's not to, you know, make the teacher look bad, whatever, whatever anybody thinks. The words were spoken. I feel as though the Arizona Department of Education, we need to have zero, zero tolerance because if something like this was presented to my child by a stranger, you know that it, somebody would be all over it and that person would be in trouble for what they chose and how they chose to treat my child. So again, you will be receiving this documentation in your office. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Wendy. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Up next we have Heather Roach.
Yes, hello. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Heather Roach. I am a parent and I'm also a Peoria School Board member, but I am speaking for myself today. I wanted to speak on your discipline process that you have on the agenda today, but also your portrait of a graduate. So the discipline process, you have, parents can file a statement of allegations. We've had a couple of parents file state of complaint against certain educators in school districts. And those, those concerns and those statements are not being fully investigated. They're being brushed off to the side. Specifically for myself, my child's information was shared by a substitute teacher in my kid's district. It was shared in a private group on Facebook. I filed the statement of complaint. Nothing was done and it was brushed aside. There was no proper investigation. We also had a parent who submitted a statement of allegations for opting her child out of an assignment. And the teacher went ahead and did the assignment. But again, your discipline process, you don't fully investigate it. It feels like from the parent's viewpoints. I wanted to speak on the portrait of a graduate. I don't know how many times parents have to say it is not the school's job or the State Board of Education's job to teach the whole child. I don't understand why we are not focusing on the academic viewpoints in the classroom. It seems to be that you want to take over the whole child when you talk about focusing on a holistic view of what schools are preparing students for and the skills they need to be successful in their lives. You should be focusing on if they can do math in college, if they can read, if they can write. It is the parent's job to teach those life skills at their home to prepare their kids to grow into the real world. It is not the State Board of Education's job to do that. And I would really, really hope that you guys do not move forward with Portrait of a Graduate because that is exactly what it's all about. It is the CDC's guide of the whole school, whole community, whole child, and taking over all aspects of the child. Thank you.
Heather. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Up next we have Stephanie Smith, followed by Allison Superintendent Horn.
Executive Director Ross, Stephanie Smith does not join the meeting at this time.
Thank you, Jessica. Allison, you first.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm a little sick right now, but I'm... My name is Allison and I've had, I'm a, I'm a homeschool mom of three. Two of my children are currently enrolled in the ESA program. One of my, my children is a special, is a special needs child. I do want to give praise to the program in the sense that when we joined this program about three years ago, my child was, we had to enroll him out of the public school because they found him to be not teachable, that the only solution to his issues as a special needs student was to continually hold him back. We went from there and enrolled him into our local private school. He lasted there a month. I was told my child was not teachable. We brought him home and with the use of ESA funds, within a year, my child, who was six years old at the time, I do, six years old, been told he wasn't teachable, I was able to get him up to a sixth-grade reading level with the use of ESA funds. Now, all that being said, I've had several problems purchasing anything academic-related with my ESA funds. I also have use of the Class Wallet debit card that I know a lot of parents, I'm like recently, it, it's not being updated. The Class Wallet debit cards no longer be offered to parents, to newer students. Recently, I had to make a purchase with my, with, through, through the Class Wallet system. And I was told by our current director that if there are price changes in Amazon, to go ahead and give a call if our, if our Class Wallet orders were canceled. I went ahead and did this and I was told by ESA staff to go ahead and cancel my order and place the order with my Class Wallet debit card. I found this to be somewhat outrageous because myself, I'm a bit privileged as being a parent, has been on the program for about three years. I have access to the Class Wallet debit card. Had I not been a parent with access, I would have essentially been told, no, sorry, you now need to wait an extra 45 days to submit for arts supplies, which I was told by the current director. We go back and forth on what is approved and what's not. I also quickly wanted to point out that these new changes with the, with the rule updates are not reflected in our ESA portals as of January and February. This change has only been reflected as of March.
Thank you, Allison. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Next we have Beth Lewis, followed by Rebecca Cross.
Executive Director Ross, Beth Lewis was on the meeting earlier. However, she is not currently in there. I'll let you know if she rejoins.
Thank you, Jessica. Next is Rebecca Cross.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, Rebecca. Please go ahead.
Hey, thank you. My name is Rebecca Cross and I'm an ESA parent of about five years and I have three kids currently on the program. Almost every week, we get a new email with the new rules and it's made the program confusing and chaotic. I no longer feel confident in my purchases. All the categories in Class Wallet have changed. They don't match the handbook. For example, yesterday, my child and I went to Barnes and Noble and she asked to buy some STEAM kits. She wanted to look at the DIY Student Terrarium, a screen printing kit, a painting kit, thinking putty. I don't know if any of that's approved. There's no database. There's nothing that gives me these guidelines. And with all the constant changes, I had to tell her no to everything. She knows the system. She goes, Mom, can you put in a help desk ticket? And I said, my help desk ticket from January 5th is still sitting there. Nobody's answering the help desk tickets exceptionally, except an occasional denial, like, no, this is no longer allowed, even though it has been previously. The email says, "All reasonable education-related expenses will be allowed." This isn't true. My daughter plays an instrument and it broke, so I bought a replacement. I submitted for reimbursement using the exact same documentation as my original instrument. My reimbursement was denied. I have to now, I don't even know. I have to jump through all these hoops, find new documentation. We're being told we have to ask instructors for a copy of their curriculum, which is completely unacceptable to ask them for a copy of their curriculum they have lightly created for their classes. It's not something teachers just give out. We need scopes and sequences for our children to learn an instrument or something else. We need the rules to be stuck with. SBE spends a lot of time making the rules in 2020. Parents spent many months helping them. The rules are already established. Some supplemental curriculum are already there. Scope and sequence, all this documentation is not part of it. We need a handbook that's clear, tells us the rules. We need a handbook that has parent involvement, not special interest groups or other people that gave the input. All of our comments that we spent, we had a very brief window of time to give them. Nobody's listening, so I'm just asking the board, please listen to us. Please help fix these things. Please get the handbook correct since we will be bound by it and please hold the administration to the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Up next we have Amanda Adams, followed by Kelly Su.
All right, good morning. Can you hear me?
We can, Amanda. Please go ahead.
I am frustrated this morning that I have to be here again, taking up the board's valuable time to discuss the massive issues occurring with ESA. We are weekly receiving emails with massive changes that seemingly just override the current handbook and the SBE rules. These massive changes are occurring while the department still hasn't caught up to a reasonable timeframe for approvals through the Class Wallet vendor system, reimbursements, or pre-approvals through the help desk. My definition of a reasonable timeframe for these items would be three to 10 business days. The handbook actually mentions three to five business days as a reasonable timeframe. The excuse we're given for these changes is that Director Akurso is aligning things with statute and trying to reduce fraud. I can applaud such goals, but I find it difficult to believe that such goals require massive mid-year changes that are quite possibly illegal as they change the standing of our contracts mid-year. Her changes are causing confusion, reducing spending options, and are most taxing on the most vulnerable in the program with special needs students and low-income families. Her focus on sweeping changes instead of speeding up approvals is hurting our vendors too, who rely on their paychecks through Class Wallet. I'm also frustrated with the many mistakes in her answers and words to both us as parents and account holders and you as the board. For example, last meeting, she specifically stated that there were only 16 help desk tickets on hold from January. This isn't even close to the truth. There are dozens of families who came forward in the Facebook families groups with tickets still unanswered from January. I also want to address my frustrations with the claims of fraud. Her cards are restricted and should not work in places that are supposed, that they supposedly did. This needs to first be addressed with the issuing bank if these cards are working where they should not. It then next needs to be addressed through the procedures listed in the statute and more specifically outlined in SBE rules and the handbook. If these charges were made on purpose and these accounts aren't rectified, then statute and policy should be followed and the accounts terminated. It should not further restrict families who are spending funds appropriately. It is disingenuous to apply the idea that all families are intent on fraudulently using funds, which is what her mass changes imply. I'm asking that Director Akurso is more transparent about the audits she claims are occurring, more specific about the circumstances behind the minuscule fraud claims she is alleging, and that she cease and desist on making sweeping changes mid-year. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. We have Kelly Su, followed by Kristin.
Now I'm off of mute.
We can hear you now, Kelly. Please go ahead.
Good morning. It may seem to you that each day of work with the Arizona State Board of Education is ordinary, but I'll tell you, for me, I see something much greater. Of you all, I see courage and humility and I see endless hard work. Your board is sincere and you have a goal of keeping, of empowering Arizona families to keep their God-given and constitutionally-backed freedom to educate their, their children. Now, this is specific to the ESA department. I know it takes extraordinary courage to come to work each day and offer, you know, kindness and guidance to people who may have attacked you personally or have abrasively shared frustration with the current system through different phone calls or, or one-on-ones. But your response to those, I see a positivity. I see genuine love for others and it comes through from everyone on that ESA team, from my experience. Add on to that, you guys took on a week of meetings. Christina Akurso and her team heard the concerns. Uh, Christina Curso and her team heard the concerns of about one thousand people in attendance, and I think that's very impressive. I think it was well worth it. I think there's so much hard work in it. Through that extra effort, I think you brought more confidence to the ESA program. I, I think it's amazing that you have fifty thousand children who will now have resources to receive that unique education that's suited to their individual needs. On a, or through your, all of your extraordinary workdays, or sorry, through what you might think is your ordinary workdays, you have been providing clear guidelines now and strengthen, you've strengthened the quality of the ESA program. You've had humble and unwavering commitments to our families, to our fundamental freedoms. You inspire all of us, our, your ESA families, to have courage and to continue the hard work in our own families and see the value of upholding the idea of education for all through this Arizona, Arizona's ESA program. To our families, I want to say that your day is not an ordinary workday. All of your work is extraordinary. Thank you for being extraordinary.
Thank you, Kelly. Superintendent Horn, President Core, members of the board, up next we have Kristina Kuma, followed by Virginia Machuca.
Hello, I hope that you guys can hear me.
We can hear you. Please.
Wonderful. Um, again, thank you for the opportunity, um, to speak to you all. Um, we are an ESA family, and we have been one for many years. We are so grateful for this program and all the educational freedom that it has allowed for our family. It has made educational opportunities, um, possible for us that would otherwise be impossible. However, I do have concerns over the recent changes, um, especially in regards to the newly released allowable and disallowable list, distingling out of specific items. One of the concerns is over the, the term being used of large, um, stating that large, specific items are not allowed and that they are going to be denied, but a small of the same item would be approved. What isn't a large item? What defines a large item compared to a small one? And realistically, a large item might be needed for the course of study. A specific example of this in the current list is large chicken coops. How is that defined? What is determined if it's a family consumable or not? To have a rooster among hens, if you are teaching a lifecycle course, you would need to have at least ten hens per one rooster in order to maintain the safety and health of your hens. So you would need to have a coop that can house about a dozen chickens to complete a proper course, um, in raising chickens and ensure the safety of your animals, which is a huge part of that lifecycle curriculum and in maintaining and raising animals and teaching our children that. Um, I think that there is some confusion on what a chicken needs, as an example, um, when you're looking at these things. And one of those is, is that a chicken requires four feet of square footage, um, inside of a chicken coop and eight in a run. So if you are going to raise a twelve chicken, um, twelve chickens, um, to do this curriculum, you would need a coop that's at least eight foot by six foot and a, and a run that is at least twelve foot by eight foot. And that is what is needed and required for that course of study if you are including a rooster in that course. Um, and so the reality is, is that that might not be looked at as big, um, or might may not for me look as big, but might be looked as big as somebody else. And so there's a lot of subjectivity in that, and I think that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, up next we have Virginia Machuca, followed by Kathleen Dobbs.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning, Virginia. Please go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Well, my name is Virginia, and thank you, Superintendent, members of the board. And I want to express how beneficial school choice programs like the ESA have been for my family. My child, whom now I adopted from the foster care system in the state of Arizona, has benefited immensely from the ESA, uh, scholarship. She was placed in foster care after her mom physically abused her, being five months old, breaking five bones and several growth plates. She is five years old, and we have gone through seven surgeries in the last two years. Having this scholarship means the world to us. It has helped us as a family to be able to provide her with a great education, one-on-one leadership for, with her, and help us with therapy expenses that are not covered by our health insurance. We not only love ESA and their staff that have been very helpful, but we are, we are grateful for the opportunity to apply with not too many requisites that take months. We did it before when she was, um, when it was only for disabled kids, we passed it. She had her IEP. But it seems easier now to keep going through it and getting those funds to help her. So it really has helped our family, and I hope we can keep it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Virginia. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next is Kathleen Dobbs, followed by Katie Braco.
Good morning, President Core, Superintendent Horn, and esteemed members of the board. I am Kathleen Dubs, just an Arizona resident who cares deeply about education, and you'll be happy to know that I am not talking about ESAs today. I address you this morning in regards to the School Safety Grant Program. I believe the choice of spending this grant money on either a school resource officer or a counselor should be left to the local schools. Principals and teachers know best what the priorities are in their individual schools. They should be free to make these decisions for themselves. My personal opinion is that SROs are not the best choice, and I feel qualified to speak on this issue because I have spent the last three and a half years doing research on gun safety for an organization I belong to. The data from this study has convinced me that having an SRO in a school does not make that school safe from mass shootings. In a Washington Post study of two hundred and twenty-five gun violence incidents in schools which took place from nineteen ninety-nine to twenty twenty-two, there were only two instances in which an armed guard was able to stop a shooter, two. And as you well know, it takes only seconds for someone armed with a semi-automatic weapon and a high-capacity magazine to kill dozens of innocent children. In addition to the ineffectiveness of armed guards, there is evidence that having the presence of law enforcement in schools increases the chance of students being charged with crimes for minor infractions and start students on the path of the school-to-prison pipeline. When I was in school, it was the vice principal who dealt with discipline in schools. But now it is too easy to allow the SRO to handle these problems, often with less than optimal results for the child. I would like to offer a better way for schools to prevent mass shootings, since at least half of young school shooters are students or former students of the school where they perpetrate the violence. It would seem to make sense to have a sufficient number of trained counselors available to meet with these troubled students before they get to the point where they are seeking out a gun. As you know, Arizona schools have the second worst ratio of counselors to students. This needs to be improved. Another possibility would, to stop school shootings, would be to ha, urge parents to lock up their guns, since seventy-six percent of young school shooters get their weapons from home or from the homes of friends or relatives.
Thank you.
Very much for allowing me to speak today.
President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, next is Casey Braco, followed by Shannon Junker.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, Casey. Please go ahead.
Okay, hello, uh, members of the board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Um, I am speaking again to express concern about some of the recent communications from the Arizona Department of Education pertaining to the program.
Yeah.
Sorry, I am concerned that the draft handbook was submitted to the board with no changes made based on the abundant amount of parent feedback that has been received in recent weeks. But rather, the changes made were based on the feedback of the American Federation for Children, which is a special interest group. I am additionally concerned that some of the guidance we're receiving as parents is vague and subjective, and that is contributing to the confusion and reluctance of parents to utilize their funding. Examples I can give you include the disallowed list that was recently posted, um, cites that inappropriate explicit material is not allowed. Well, what does this mean? Superintendent Horn has recently started a hotline for people to report alleged CRT in schools. He's verbally attacked social emotional learning and verbally targeted gender studies in public interviews. Does that mean that this is inappropriate explicit material and that ESA students are not allowed books on these topics either? How does this empower the parent to choose what their child is educated about? A desk and a chair are allowed to be purchased, proportional to the student size. Again, what does this mean? My twelve-year-old wears a men's size nine and a half shoe and weighs a hundred and sixty pounds. My other child weighed eighty pounds at twelve. How does the department know what desk or chair is proportionate to a student's size? A small bookshelf. What is small? How will different employees and parents all be able to interpret small in the same way? My concern with these vague descriptions is that at the same time, the department is encouraging parents to feel empowered to make purchases without a preapproval, and tickets are sitting unanswered. I'd like to request that the board consider that parent input was not utilized when making the changes, including the development of the new handbook, and I'd like to ask the board reject the new handbook and work with Ms. Akurso to implement changes based on the parent feedback that has been received. Thank you.
President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, up next is Shannon Junker, followed by Wendy Murray.
Good morning, Superintendent Horn and members of the board. My name is Shannon Junker. I am the foster, adoptive, and biomama of twelve amazing children. Ten of my twelve children are current recipients of ESA. And as an ESA parent of special needs children, we are so grateful for the ESA program. I do have some serious concerns about some changes that are being proposed by the new administration or that have already been made. Um, timing and implementation, I have serious concerns regarding any policy changes that are being made effective mid-contract year. As parents, we are required to sign an ESA contract every year. Um, the expectation is that it would be enforced for the duration of that said school year. Um, also, I would like to note the attestation that is being required with every transaction we make now. Again, when we sign our contract, that is what we are testing to, is to homeschooling our children properly. Um, debit cards, please do not allow this administration to take away the ability of ESA students to access their funds with debit cards. Um, there are many wonderful vendors who simply refuse to deal with Class Wallet or who simply cannot afford to have to wait for payment. They need payment at the time that their services are rendered. We use some of these smaller providers, and they're critical to the education and provide invaluable supports to our children. Um, another example of that is the community colleges. My son, my oldest, takes courses at MCC. The only way to pay tuition is online with the debit card. They will not become a vendor if we lose access to our debit cards. And if, as stated earlier, they're not going to reinstate concierge service to help fill the void for some of these things. We have students that are not going to be able to access their funds in a timely or consistent way. Um, quickly on family consumables, we homeschool. We're a family. We have multiple ESA students. Um, family consumption happens on a daily basis because we have so many ESA students. I would hope that in this setting, that the family would be considered, um, the homeschool child's peers, and that the classroom is their home. And so, everything can't always be individual. Thank you.
Thank you. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, up next we have Wendy, followed by Ben Truitt.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, Wendy. Please go ahead.
You can follow this, uh, it is confusing, and so I hope it's, uh, you can clearly follow me. I'd submitted a preapproval on February fourteenth and was informed it was declined without proper curriculum. I did a new approved, preapproval with an overview, scope, and sequence, and had called in to see about it getting approved. I've used five to six plus hours of my time to try to get this preapproval approved. I was told by Laura on the phone, after talking to her curriculum specialist, that this was approved, and I requested I needed a written approval for me to feel comfortable to move forward. I was told Roger would give me a preapproval the next day. Nothing came the next day, so I gave a call again. Roger informed me he had no idea what my situation or preapproval was, and he'd give, he'd get back to me. I then get a hold on my preapproval. I call back again and was told by Roger that his supervisor told him that my approval, my preapproval was to be on hold. I then was not allowed to talk to Laura, who gave me my preapproval over the phone. She was supposed to call me back, but never did. I know another parent has gotten one of my items approved through Marketplace. SVE Rule R seven two one five zero seven states the department shall treat similar expenditures by similarly situated account holders in the same manner. I've emailed Christine and have yet to hear back concerning this issue. Where is the accountability? I've had to jump through hoops and did exactly what I was told, and still don't have approval for my items. I spent hours trying to keep up with all the new changes that happen every three, three days and keep in communication with ESA office to make sure I'm up to date with all my information. I have five kids and a baby. My worry is for all the members that don't have this time. I mean, I don't even know how I find the time. Uh, parents are scared to purchase anything because we don't have a list to help guide us. Ms. Akurso needs to be consistent to make sure she has thought of every aspect of this change, especially this fed students, and gets, give us a warning on these changes. We need a clear-cut email communication. I didn't even know changes happened in email and find out later, although I did in fact read the email that it was, it was just changed. In that second, I was reading the email. I didn't know that what I was reading was a change, and I think that Ms. Akurso needs to be clear in her communication. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wendy. President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, up next is Carmen Truitt, followed by Misty Kelly.
Good morning. Can anybody hear me at this point?
We, we can hear you perfectly, Carmen. Please go ahead.
Okay, so, um, superintendent members of the board, um, my name is Carmen Terrell, and before I allow my daughter to briefly speak, I just want to say that, um, I support public school education, but I also know in everything it's not perfect. So as you heard people say on here, there's holes in ESA system as well. And I just want to say that there's a lot of improvements that need to be made. So now I'm going to present my daughter, Bonita, to finish the rest. Go ahead, ma.
Um, I just want to say that, um, I, like, I just want to talk about, like, the taxpayers stuff. Because I know, like, I learned in school that taxpayers pay for public education and all of that. So my question is, is like, do, does people know that their ta, their taxes are going into stuff for ESA and for publics and for whatever private stuff? And going into, like, people, like, using espresso machines and buying chicken coops and stuff? Like, there's so many, like, damages in schools, like, there's cockroaches and stuff. And like, someone, I, my mom said someone had asked what's wrong with the espresso machine. And like, I have to say that, like, three hundred or four hundred dollars of, like, going into a espresso machine for one person could fix multiple repairs in a school where a, a lot of children go to. So I mean, that's honestly, in my opinion, I find that selfish, like, to sit there and do that. There's people who, like, public schools just need to be funded correctly. That's all I have to say. And that, oh, there's many places, like, I remember I used to go to school back east, and public schools are funded so well. And there weren't any, as many problems as there are. They, like, if there are this ESA, it shouldn't be taken out of, like, taxpayers' money and public funding for that. If you, if someone wants a chicken coop and a espresso machine, they need to find a way to pay for that from something else if they want that. I think it, it, people should have the right to want that. But if they need that, and they feel like they do need that, they need to find some other funding to get that from.
My, my thanks to you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Core, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, up next we have Misty Kelly, followed by Jolie Hamaya.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, Misty. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I have three ESA students and have been using ESA to educate them for about eight years. Two are special needs, and one is on as a sibling. So we've been through lots of administration, lots of changes. We love ESA, and it would have been absolutely impossible to educate my oldest without ESA. So we are very thankful for ESA. However, we are concerned with some of the changes that are happening. Um, a lot of these changes do not affect students us, utilizing private schools for their funds. However, for my oldest, these changes affect his educational opportunities greatly. Simple word changes and requirements, such as requiring enrollment plus the curriculum, lesson plans, material less, list, and method of teaching. Can you imagine asking a public school teacher, walking into a history classroom and saying, I'd like a copy of your curriculum, your lesson plans, your method of teaching. I'd like to see a copy of that for myself. Can I have a copy? They've spent hours and hours creating that. That's proprietary to them. They're not going to just hand it over. And no one should. That's their work. So to ask us to get that from people that are teaching our children to then download and submit to a public database is is unfair both to the person that created it and an additional hoop to the parent who has already signed a contract attesting that they are responsible for the education of their child. And also, we have been asked to submit an entire curriculum when the upload can only accept five pages sometimes. That's that's just not a workable thing. And since I have a limited amount of time, I'm going to briefly go over the next two. Uh, law versus subjective decision-making. The law states that we are allowed to purchase educational items. ESA and ADE decide if an item is educational. The parent is to decide how much of the child's funding will be spent on any given item. The ADE ESA are not responsible for budgeting the child's funds. They are, there is um, no grounds for the ADE ESA to decide the brand of an item, size of an item, expense of an item. And this applies to drones, three D printers, trampolines, bookshelves. These are decisions made by the child's educator based on the needs of that specific child.
Thank you Misty. President Corr, superintendent, board members of the board, up next we have Jolie Amaya, followed by Rebecca Cancola.
Hello, um, board and superintendent. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jolie Amaya and I am a proud public school mom. I was born, uh, born and raised in Arizona. All my degrees are from Arizona universities, including a master's in education and human relations. I've worked in multiple capacities in Arizona public schools as well as with parent teacher organizations. All that is to say is I'm a parent who believes in making the best choices for my children and having a say in what happens in the classroom, the textbook definition of what parents' rights are. I'm not, I'm here to speak on the CRT hotline recently implemented. However, I support um, a holistic approach to understanding problems and not resorting to reactionary responses. Especially when children are concerned. That's why I do not support this hotline as a parent and I cannot support this hotline as an educational scholar. Not only is it making a mockery of all my personal advocacy, it is also creating a hostile environment for parents like me. Whether or not that is the intended consequence. There are structures in place for parents to properly notify educators and staff of potential concerns. And they're built to prevent the issues we're seeing happening right now in real time. The hotline is a reactionary tool that is, that a truly active parent would rarely need if ever. And can be easily provided on district websites as opposed to having a media blitz specifically to encourage its use. Any new implementation related to our K-12 students should have a test pilot program with positive results, but that's not what we're seeing happening. Instead, it was rapidly rolled out and heavily advertised for no other benefit than to create unnecessary anxiety in our classrooms and with district administration. All of that negatively affecting our students. The hotline's purpose seems to only support an ideological world, worldview that I as a parent do not subscribe to. I trust teachers to be professionals, but when an issue arises, I know I can go to them and their administrations to work things out rather than calling the Department of Ed to complain. I'd hope ADE would be working to address the many challenges our schools and teachers are facing rather than wasting time and resources on this hotline.
Thank you Jolie. President Corr, superintendent, board members of the board, up next is Rebecca Cancola, followed by Danielle Thomas and then Mackenzie Thomas. Is Rebecca with us Jessica?
Executive Director Ross, she is. Nothing was changed yet on her status, so.
Why don't I go ahead and go to the next speaker? We'll circle that short. So up next would be Danielle Thomas.
Can you hear me?
We can Danielle, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We have schooled our children at home for many years. We tried to join ESA years ago. However, the public school attendance requirement was not a viable option for our children, so we were unable to join until the universal expansion. We heard about how wonderful the program was, how it opened up learning opportunities and really allowed the parents the freedom to educate their children and the way they learn best. We were overjoyed and so were our children. They were asking if they could finally do things like art classes, music lessons, going to a bookstore, learning how to raise chickens, how to compost and garden, how to build things with woodworking, how to cook from scratch and preserve foods from the garden. You see, my children struggle, struggled to learn and retain things from traditional curriculum. Yet when they do and make things hands-on, it works and their growth is amazing to see. Unfortunately, these types of educational avenues aren't the cheapest and so we were unable to provide them to our children. Then universal happened and we felt the excitement and joy at the potential educational opportunities. And then January arrived and it has turned into stress and instability. Some things are allowed with us now writing curriculums in our free time. At least that's what we were told two weeks ago via virtual meetings. Yet we're leery because things seem to change weekly and daily. But now there is a family consumption term being thrown around. This term is being applied to anything they don't personally think applies to education. We keep hearing, anything that might make the program look bad or questionable can't be allowed. But who is questioning? Why are chicken coops and garden beds being questioned? Why are mixers and blenders being questioned? Why can I purchase a three thousand dollar computer for my child, but a three hundred dollar chicken plucker is being questioned? These funds are being touted as our children's. So then why am I not allowed to purchase these things that my child can learn with? If you aren't familiar with chickens, when learning farm to table cycle, a chicken plucker is a helpful part of the process. You don't have feathers on your dinner table. We are told if you see it at a public school, it should be approved for you. Public schools have gardens, composting workshops, et cetera. So why is it being questioned and placed on hold for ESA students? We truly do appreciate this program and know it can be amazing. Thank you so much for your time and your efforts.
Thank you Danielle. Jessica, do we have Rebecca with us?
Executive Director Ross, Rebecca has left the meeting now.
Okay, if she comes back, let me know. Next would be Mackenzie Thomas, followed by Jennifer Schultz.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can Mackenzie, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie. I am eleven years old. I'm here today for my school to learn about my civic responsibilities. First of all, I wanted to thank you for the empowerment scholarship account. It is a great thing you are trying to do here. I have been homeschooled by my parents for as long as I can remember. It is a lot easier than public school. I have memory problems and math problems though, which makes learning more frustrating than it should be. I am able to retain information a lot better when how I learn is fun. We were not able to buy a lot of things that made things fun because they were too expensive. Now, because of ESA, we are able to purchase those things we couldn't before. I love to read and because of ESA, I am able to go to places like Bookman's and Barnes and Noble and get a ton of books with the debit card, so please don't get rid of it. I hope that I will be able to participate in horseback riding lessons now too. I would like to learn about the farm to table process so we can get our own chickens to eat and be able to grow a garden as well. Those are just a few of the things I wish to do with my ESA funds. This is all I have to say today. Thank you for your time.
Mackenzie, thank you. So how old did you say you were, Mackenzie? You did beautifully. Thank you so much for your, your comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
President Corr, superintendent, board members of the board, up next is Jennifer Schultz, followed by Kim Thompson.
So good morning, members of the board. Can you hear me?
We can Jen, please go ahead.
Wonderful. First, I wanted to say thank you for uh, giving us a voice and the opportunity to share our voices here with you and actually be heard. Uh, I am the mother of two children that have been in ESA program for years. I have emailed, I have called, commented numerous times with our direct issue and only to be met with a copy of paste email or no return phone call. I do not like things like these. Conflict gives me severe anxiety, but you need to hear my voice today and you need to understand. Ms. Akurso, this question is for you. What exactly is your plan for the families who will lose access to curriculum when we lose debit cards? Please do not accept this handbook draft as submitted. Any information about the use of debit cards has been removed, which is a very bold move. Considering Ms. Akurso, in her words, has no intention of removing debit cards. Third-party vendor must have access to a debit card. Without a debit card, we lose access to vital educational items, including the curriculum our special needs child has used for nine years. As the only way we have access to this program is to pay the direct, the vendor directly. Assuming families have unlimited funding to await reimbursement is an unacceptable solution. I feel the simple life of being a child are being stripped away. Do you recall the spark of imagination that ignited a passion when you selected a book from a bookstore? Or having the ability to learn something while having fun, maybe on an online program such as Prodigy? Teacher Monster or ABC Mouse? Learning through hands-on subscription boxes for STEM, art, literature, or history and exploring worlds you didn't know existed beyond the walls. These are just a few examples of spectacular learning avenues our children will use when the decision to not allow debit cards is taken away. Ms. Akurso has bounced excuses stating that debit cards allow fraud, are too much work for her department, have blurry documents, or most recently, an outrageous number of missing receipts. So which is it? Why, after years and years of debit cards working with ESA program, are they suddenly an issue? We are scared to work purchase. We have marketplace orders sitting for days and weeks.
Thank, thank, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
President Corr, superintendent, board members of the board, up next we have Kim Thompson and then Ethel McLean Talk. Uh, that will bring an end to the virtual component. We do have one speaker who had missed his chance to be in person, who happened to be. Okay, fantastic.
Can you hear me?
We can Kim, thanks for being here. Please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me to speak today on behalf of my children. We've been a part of the ESA program since twenty sixteen, joining then with my five-year-old autistic son. Truly has been a blessing to my family. ESA by its name implies that we as parents are being given the ability to use our empowerment to educate our children. The definition of empowerment is having the knowledge, confidence, means, or ability to do things or make decisions for oneself. Parents know their kids like no one else and I have felt for the most part, this program has done just that. For myself as an educator for my son, as well as giving him empowerment to be able to live a fruitful, independent life. I had high hopes when the new administration took over, especially hearing that the new director was a former ESA parent herself. I trusted that she understood the program and would clearly want what was best for us ESA, ESA parents going forward. Within weeks of the new director taking over, on January twenty-fifth, my son's debit card was suspended without warning and not according to the laws in place in R seven two dash one five zero eight for doing so. Took me three weeks of fighting, phone calls, emails, getting promised to have calls back. Finally received an email stating that our card had been unsuspended, but not without a lot of trouble in my, my heart. Now we receive emails from the new director each Friday, each one changing something, either disallowing things or previously allowed or adding things that we now need to complete. The confusion has become unreal, not knowing from one week to the next what changes are coming. The accusations that the new admin have been throwing out about debit card purchases at Chick-fil-A, et cetera, are ridiculous. And in my opinion, trying to manipulate people's opinions about ESA. Now we are told that you must have curriculum with scope and sequence for almost everything we order. If you've ever educated an autistic child, you quickly discover that most of these cookie cutter curriculums that have scope and sequence do not work for these kiddos. Due to their sensory needs, shorter attention spans, and need for a lot of movement, differing methods of teaching must be used. Yes, the typical math, reading, and handwriting skills are necessary for these kids, but more importantly are basic life skills. Hands-on activities such as cooking, learning a trade or craft are invaluable to these children in order for them to be independent citizens one day. Endless worksheets and packaged curriculum do little for these kids. Now we must jump through numerous hoops, spending time writing curriculum or gaining curriculum from our tutors in order to get the items we need to order for our kids' education, still with the risk that we may still be denied these items.
Thank you Ken.
Thank you so much.
President Corr, superintendent, board members of the board, our final virtual speaker, Ethel.
Executive Director Ross, Ethel McLean Talk has not joined a meeting. We also have not seen Angelica Slimes Hughes, Stephanie Spent, Beth Lewis again, or Rebecca Conchello.
Thank you Jessica. Uh, so up next in person would be Jed Harris.
Thank you very much. My name is Jed Harris. I was born in Detroit, Michigan. Uh, I was a product of public schools. And my children who were raised in San Diego were a product of public schools. I've been a big supporter of it. Had several comments I wanted to make today, but sitting through the last couple hours, most of the comments have been made. I'm a big supporter of the private movement of funding of private schools for the benefits you've heard elicited on the screen and over the microphones. I think the only thing in this limited time I'd like to say is that I hope in this transition that we're seeing started in Arizona that the public officials, the teachers unions, the teachers, the parents, and all interested parties could work together for betterment of the children, which is what is in the best interest of the children. With limited time, I was going to have her speak, but I know she's not uh, uh comfortable doing that, but Levana Woods is a mother sitting in the road back here with three children. The two boys, Carter and Wes, are students at uh, second little school I started here in town. And if I could have Carter come up.
Hey Carter, can you come here?
We'll, we'll stay with it in two minutes. I'm not asking the same three questions I ask him every day after school. Carter, this is Carter Malik Wood.
Carter and Carter. What's the best school in the world?
But just to grace Christian again, who's the best teacher in the world? Yes, and I'm interpreting. And lastly, lastly, my favorite, what did you learn today in school?
Be careful when you share the microphone. You never know. Could not think of a better way to end. Again, my sincere thanks and on behalf of the board, my sincere thanks to everyone who took time uh, to share their thoughts, whether it's here in person or virtually and, and, and a, a big thank you to Jessica for working the virtual components and getting folks lined up. So uh, again, your words are important. I know they impact the, the thinking and deliberations of this board. And uh, I, I appreciate all that took time to, to share their thoughts. Um, we, we will probably take a quick break right now. Uh, just uh, because we've got a, a lot of important business still to conduct and I'm showing eleven forty-eight. Now I gave you thirteen minutes last time and we came back at seventeen minutes. What, what, what happens if I give you twelve minutes? Right at noon. We will kick this off right back at noon, so I'm going to adjourn us at eleven forty-eight and we'll restart exactly at noon. Thank you so much. We will kick this off right back at noon, so I'm gonna adjourn us at 11:48 and we'll restart exactly at noon. Thank you so much. At noon. And fantastic, then I will move us on to agenda item five as part of the general session. And this is five A, presentation discussion of possible action on the empowerment scholarship account handbook for school year 2023, 24. Executive Director Ross.
President Corr, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. With us today, we have Christina Curso, the executive director of the empowerment scholarship account for ADE, who will be presenting an update on the handbook.
Good morning.
Morning. Afternoon.
Yes, sorry, good afternoon. Before I begin today, I just wanted to take a quick moment to address things, generally speaking, on some of the comments we heard today. As we
Again, just as a reminder, not very generally.
Very generally.
No response at all.
Yes, absolutely. There's a lot of miscommunication, as, as you can hear, regarding the ESA program. I hear a lot of things are happening online. There's a lot of things coming up from the department. It is our intent to absolutely to clear things up, and that's why things are communicated a little bit differently, not the context, but we continue to try and clear things up. After the last board meeting, immediately, I held five public meetings every single day the following week. We had just about a thousand people come to those, a lot of information. Our doors open, and we do plan to hold those meetings every month. We have nothing to hide. Everything's 100% transparent. I'm here to serve every family, even those who disagree with me. Obviously, I have a lot of work to do during the respective, and so I do hope and pray that my communication today regarding the handbook comm is heard clearly. So as I begin to talk about the handbook, I am going to discuss one thing that was mentioned. I've been very vocal and transparent about us being understaffed and a huge fatlock expenses to get through. And I needed a minor clerical job done quickly, didn't have support in my office. So on March 1st was the deadline. I needed to get the handbook to all of you. On Sunday, February 26th, I made a phone call to someone who had volunteered her time to be able to do this clerical work, which was up because she's impacted these things. And that was a woman who does work for AFC. She took this physical document with all of my evidence and turned it around with the public document online. This was the doc, you know, the document online, and made all of my evidence within four hours. I was very grateful for that volunteer work. When that was received, we spent the one day making a few clarifications on it, on my staff, just as far as spacing, and then I got it to you on March 1st. So for all of the, the questions, I can definitely there was absolutely no outside influence of the groups mentioned before. Simply someone helped me do editing because we didn't have the clerical work, and we do now. So I think you'll have a copy of the slideshow. I don't want. I'll go through a few quick slides, and then I'll be available for any questions. I won't go too much in the timeline because it was posted for today's agenda. But I do want to at least mention the process we began in February, developing these things and gathering the legislation, rules, and administration, industry changes around. And then when we made it a very big priority in January to send out an application for a parent advisory committee. So we sent that out. We had about 150 applications back and 26 people were chosen for that committee. And on February 16th, when we had our first meeting, we gave them the last year's handbook to be able to look to see what kind of answers that they would suggest. Of course, also saying that we're not in a year of significant changes. By February 24th, they gave us that information back, which all of you have, because we submitted that by any sales spreadsheet. On March 1st, you got the, that information, the redlined version, and a clean copy that we submitted. And then on March 2nd, looking as quickly as we could, we did post the draft handbook for the parents and sent out a survey for them as well as emailed. Waited for email from the 15 county superintendents, all of whom hearing Dr. Clay's encouragement to listen to, you know, and have that input from the county superintendent. Grateful for that and the state board. Our deadline for this meeting to get everything in simple is March 7th. That's the reason why we had to work so quickly. So we sent that out. We closed our survey at noon, with 509 very detailed responses totaling over 1,500 pages, which was excellent. Comments related to the handbook were also collected, like I said, by the state board, even though I know you're holding all of yours until March 30th. In the the superintendent's, that was the date that I, we received that information back. And then we were able to upload everything with the extended deadline. Thank you of March 9th, but March 8th, we were able to get that all to the state board. So, oh, thank you. So the first rap is for you today. Definitely is not a polished version. We are trying to do this quickly to get information and begin this process. It's not something that we expect to have approved, so this is, this is the version you're looking at now. You will see legislative changes, administration changes, third-party vendor information, and the feedback that we'll go through. So the first section is legislative. In the new handbook, you will see that the new allowable and disallowables, that's the new universal legal legislation changed, changes on computers, and some transportation, and the area around private evaluations. The second section would be administration. Some simple things regarding wording of introductory pages. When I say administrative changes, I mean the approach that we're taking. We are putting in the handbook. I had vocal cord surgery in 2021, so my, I have paralyzed vocal cord. So that's the reason why I cleared my tone. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. So if I do that a lot, I'm not nervous, or I can talk a lot, but I just it's my voice, my apologies. And we changed some of the wording to align with statute, contact information options to reach the ESA office. The accreditation, which we talked about before, we can talk about again, around tutoring and teaching services. And guidance on allowable and disallowable list will be added in further future. Regarding third-party vendor information, this was something that ESA had a lot to say about because there's a lot of information that's on there that's not updated. To remember Clark's point that the last meeting, we need to keep updated information and videos and things for people to learn how to use. So we thought it'd be prudent to be able to take this section on the third-party vendor out, require more information on a third-party vendor page, both our website and their website. The RFP opened today, supposed to be open today, for a new third-party vendor. So we may have class wallet, we may not. Either way, I think it's more prudent to put a policy in the handbook and how to use it on websites and have more information outside of this. Because it may be class wallet, but if it is, if class wallet is chosen, it won't be the same way class wallet operates now because our RFP is much stricter and much more aligned to make this more automated process. So that's the reason why the information, a lot of people have said, given feedback to remove that. So I think having a full page on their website where the third-party vendor is, or if it's possible, and ours, is much more is much better, especially since this will last for a As far as the sections of feedback, we have some from our staff, from our parent advisory committee, all of the ESA account holders, county superintendent, county superintendents, school superintendents, and the state board of community, the state board of community members. From our staff, they requested, like I said, to remove the class wallet information and move to online tutorials. They did ask for substantial changes on explaining eligibility, but we held that for next year essentially because it was so substantial what they recommended. As well as the application process was held, I put a note down for next year. So the definition of substantial changes, I look forward to direction on because there are certain things that have to change for it to be accurate in our new handbook, yet they will look substantial if legislation was substantial as well. So there's, so we can go through that at any time. On February 24th, we received back 11 out of our 25, and I said 26 earlier, we had someone go on the committee and then resign, but that fires 25 now. 11 people responded. They talked about the allowable and disallowals that was requested. They want to make sure the attorney finally reviews the final draft of the handbook, which is always done every year and will be done this year. Clarification of which family members can't receive ESA funds. I gave that to our legal team to look at because there seems to be some confusion about what's been done in the past, what was done nine years ago, and what is being, what some people are interpreting it to be today. So I would rather have a clear definition from legal sources to define that, and that's them now. And some clarity around homeschool affidavits and how that's worded, and that's with the legal team as well. As far as the tutoring and teaching services, the option we have to accredit them at the Department of Education, the attestation form can certainly be incorporated this year. That idea came after, when I was putting this together, was seen after the fact. I didn't actually see that request when we went through it before. And then programmatic suggestions and issues not related to the handbook, but people just wanted to communicate to the department in the way that they do at these meetings were noted and documented as well. We sent out a survey to all of our 48,500 at the time ESA account holders. Those 1,500 pages of remarks are not reflected in this because we had to get this back to you by March 7th, or actually with the deadline March 8th. And we are still going through them. We have three people on our staff that are still going through them. They kind of put them in what you're used to seeing them in, like buckets of areas of concern and what they would like to see. So we have, we'll have that available for the March 30th special meeting. And I, I know you don't want me to read through this now, but the next two pages are the survey that we sent out to parents, and I thought you would love to have have that in this presentation. Any questions about that? From the 15 county superintendents, I did receive two and two back, one from Maricopa, one from Pima, just clarity on the private evaluation process. And I think from the county schools that were in a meeting back, I think it was February 10th, I heard that those things need to be clarified too. So I look very much look forward to working with them. I'm going to be speaking with them and presenting to them on May 1st. But for this time, when it comes to this questioning, especially about the clarification on the new legislative language around evaluation process, I have a legal team looking at it. I love to know the county superintendent. I'm hearing from school psychologists in public schools as well as school districts about that. So I think getting on the same page will be really helpful. And then, of course, feedback from all of you, which I look forward to getting more, you know, on a March 30th or 31st. And finally, our current timeline is to continue to review the the five meetings, the five public meetings we held. The one on Monday and Friday where it was in person, it was just open forum Q and A. And there were a few things mentioned about the handbook that my staff documented, so that'll be incorporated. But the three in the middle, the three that were online were specific topics regarding allowable expenses, the attestation process, not the attestation, yeah, accreditation process, and the debit card. So, so anything that came up, we made sure we documented for that. And then, of course, our special meeting that we're going to hold on, you're going to hold on March 30th. The final draft of the handbook is due to you April 11th. And then, of course, the board meeting on April 24th. That's a ruffle for me, quickly, to be able to let you know where we're at. I'm happy to take any questions if you might help.
Thank you very much for that. Again, noting we do have a special meeting on March 30th. That is not to prevent any conversation or discussion at this point too. So if anyone would like to make any comments, yeah, please, Dr. Clayton, please.
I just have one question. How many, you said you have five meetings. Could you tell me how many people attended those five meetings, each of those meetings? Would you know that?
Yes. Yes, Dr. Corin, Dr. Clay, sorry. We had 1,570 people register. My memory serves right, 26 registered for Monday, 12 showed up. 500 and some odd registered for Tuesday, 324 showed up. Wednesday, it was roughly around 298. I don't remember how many registered for that one. Thursday, it was around 300. And then I believe on Friday in person, it was 85 or 90 showed up. Nine, I know we have 971 total for sure, in person or online for the entire. Even though 1,570 registered, 971 showed up. Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess my first question is, in those meetings, what are the main concerns that people are bringing up to you?
Also have another question, Dr. Corin. Yeah, okay. Evidence on last So on the open Q and A, I'll get mentioned second. The first meeting, we did it on the allowable, disallowables, expenses, formal curriculum means. I'm learning, I probably should have said curriculum formally written, like it needs to look formal. A lot of the examples I have are scratches, pieces of paper, people writing things out and just putting at the end what they want. So that's the need to be clarified. So that was kind of the first one. The second one was about the tutor, teacher, tutor and teaching services and the accreditation process. By law, they have to be accredited and what that process looks like and what the anticipation process looks like. And then on Thursday was specifically about the debit card, every issue regarding the debit card. And then Monday and Friday, I'll speak to those. Now is totally open forum. Everybody could ask anything, and a lot of those three topics did come up. Somebody asked if homeschool curriculum, meaning a mom writing homeschool curriculum for homeschool is acceptable. Yes, it is. We just have to have it typed so we can read it. It has to have that scope or overview, like meaning objective, you know, of the class. And we don't require lesson plans for everything. That's an example of showing what a sequence looks like. I am not an educator. I'm an administrator. So I went to those in the department, a lot of educators, to talk with them about that and be able to kind of get some guidelines around it. It's really just to show that it's for educational purposes, not that we don't trust parents. If that we just have to have that to be able to show that it's for an educational purpose. That was a lot of the conversation and also just some recommendation. What started as criticisms turned into recommendations and everybody was friendly at the end. Even the woman who said, I can prove to you something from Wenzel's present is absolutely eligible for educational purposes. You know, even that person who was abrupt at the end, thanked me so much because just continuing to talk to 50,000 people, 50,000 different ways helps when it's in person.
Absolutely. And then if someone had a, it seems like each day there was a specific topic that you were addressing, or was every single day sort of the same message? And if you were available on Monday or Tuesday or once, you just pick that day? How was it sort of divvied up?
Dr. Corin, Mr. Kenton, Kent. Monday and Friday were Q and A open forum, and then those were in person. The ones online, Tuesday and Thursday, were about those three topics specifically. So I could take all of the questions and kind of put it into one timeframe. And we did record those, and then we all of the questions that were being asked, others may have, so we wanted to do that. The open forum, we did, so the three in the middle of the week were one hour. I know how things go in person, so I made them 90 minutes on Monday and Friday because we wanted more time, and we could have gone for four hours. Certainly, we could have done that. But those were the ones that were open for anything.
And so the purpose of the lesson plans or having something in writing is to to ensure that whatever someone is purchasing is for an actual lesson, correct?
Dr. Corin's, yes, that is correct.
Do you do that now, or is it a new thing?
Dr. Corin, Mr. Cantonese. The department did it before with curriculum, but they didn't require the way we're doing it. Because I, when I got there, the staff showed me a lot of handwritten things that you could barely read that just got to this, it's what I must show my kid, and it would say a big item at the bottom. And so really, we just want to make sure it's for educational purposes. Many parents after the meeting said, thank you for wanting to ensure that you do trust us and you do want it in writing so that you can protect us and the program. So if any scrutiny or scrutiny comes to it, we can say this is clearly for an educational purpose. That's the reason why. But we don't require lesson plans. That's just an option to show that it's being taught.
Gotcha. And I guess, I guess something that we've heard a lot about over the last year is the allowable list. And I know that you've mentioned before that it would take a lot of time, a lot of manpower, and we know that there's, you know, you're short-staffed right now. However, it seems like if there is an allowable list, if that's something that you can post, that that would answer a lot of people's questions with uncertainty, especially if you're moving away from debit cards. I think that there's a lot of families that utilize this program that are probably, you know, scared to make a purchase, not knowing if it's something that they're going to get reimbursed for. So I just think that something that would be very, very helpful for everyone is the allowable list. It's going to take a lot of time, but just having there and then being able to add to it as requests come in, I think are going to alleviate a lot of the stress that parents are feeling from my perspective.
Yes, Dr. Corin, Mr. Cantonese, I totally agree with you. I can see the stress that is coming. On Friday, I announced to the families, I posted one online, so I have a copy here if you would like it, or you can see it on my website. And it gives guidance. Of course, it shows by law what is eligible, but there's a very long list of what used to be called educational materials. There's nothing in law that says educational materials. So we are using the language of the law to say supplemental materials. And there's a long list that require no documentation. Absolutely, you can purchase any of these things. The things that would be supplemental materials that do require documentation are things that are not normally known as an educational expense. For an example, I could say to my next door neighbor, is a book an educational expense? Is a basketball? You know, it's not something that's always just quick to know, even though we can use those items for education. So when it comes to things that are not typically known, that's when we would require documentation, but not for everything else that's on the list.
So there is options for families that if there's something that's not on the list, they could sort of prove it, that it is something that is going to be vital for a child's education. Because as an educator myself, there's a lot of things I do in my own classroom that are not purchased from the school. I have to purchase them with my own money. And there are things that are sort of outside the realm, but it's because I'm trying to holistically, like, you know, teach children.
Sorry, Dr. Corin, Mr. Cantonese, absolutely. That's why we're trying to make it clear. Reasonable educational expenses, this long list, and I'll give you this copy, is absolutely no documentation needed. You just purchase them, no question. What is needed is the out-of-the-box things. And I heard a lot of examples today of gardening, which is strange because I actually have this as my example, that a parent would say, I'm teaching, they could either say they're teaching at home, or they're involved in this class, and here's the curriculum, and on the materials list, it has soil seeds, water container gloves, and a hand shovel. And then when we read that, the ADE response is yes, it's approved. So it's just very simple. We're just putting guidelines to it and shoring it up to make sure we have the documentation we need to be able to help the parents prove that this is scrutinized. I'm happy to leave this.
Yeah, and I follow up question with that. I think that what does it mean to be family consumer?
Great question, Dr. Corin. When I spoke with the superintendent, we decided to come up, you know, with some kind of statement so that people would understand where our philosophy is. We support families, but we have to make sure, everybody's saying that we can use this in the family, you know, and it's all about the family, and I love families. But education, the education for an individual student is what an ESA account is for. We don't give an account for a family. We give an account for a person. So we have to go back to what is serving. These monies serve this student. So along with that allowable list is a long disallowables list, which no one's ever seen before. And we put, you heard a little bit about that today, large trampolines, I think, keep up the large chicken coops. So that disallowable list is basically saying, these are the types of items that the department has determined that we're not going to. There are some things that are not allowable by law as well, that those are on that list. So when we say that things are for family consumption or entertainment, that would put this program's repute. It's because this program is probably the most scrutinized program in this country when it comes to a government program. There is a lot of scrutiny, and I'm sure every government program would have this much scrutiny, to be able to show that it's for educational purposes for this child. For an example, if you're in a culinary class and you need something that's, you know, tabletop, blender, whatever, okay. But we don't want to be able to approve things that are like double-digit ovens for the home. In order to learn how to bake a cake, you might need, you know, an oven. But that's not something that our administration is going to approve. Does that help?
That's very helpful. Two more things, sorry. How long would it take for ADE to translate it into other languages or to have options? I teach at a school that majority of my parents speaks French, and so that was something that was really important.
Dr. Corin, member Cantonese, absolutely a priority. And the mom who spoke today about everything being accessible in class wallet actually spoke with her by email early on when I got there. And I was surprised that everything wasn't accessible for those who are deaf and blind, and especially those who are, you know, speak Spanish. I would like everything to be in as many languages as possible. I'm starting first with what we have, and then I'm looking at the area of deaf and blind, and then Spanish next. And then as we gain staff and gain time, we will be able to definitely expand it to more of what parents need and who, if someone surfaces us, they only speak French, we would consider it at that time.
That would be a priority whenever you have more staff.
I understand.
Okay. And the last thing I just want to say was, I want to thank you for clarifying these questions. I want to thank all the parents and families that showed up today. I think that this was, a lot of people said, I've only been on the board for a year, but they said that the room has never been this packed before, that there's an overflow room. And parents, keep using your voice because we need to know what's important. And I actually am very, very happy that there is different sides presenting different opinions because if it's just all one opinion, then we don't know. And so it's something that is really, really critical. And so thank you for your time. Thank you, your staff, for your time. Thank you, parents. Kids that showed up, that was the best part, the kids that spoke. So thank you.
Anyone with us virtually with any questions, just put your hand up and I'll turn it right over to you. Anyone? Member Kervakis.
I'm going to try to keep it short. You can probably tell from my voice why I'm at home. I also want to thank all the parents, which is why I wanted to not miss this meeting, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to participate via Zoom. I just want to point out, which I think was pretty obvious, that a lot of the proposed changes seem to be disproportionately affecting the parents of students with disabilities. So clearly, that has me concerned to make sure that we're really, and obviously, the whole point of ESAs was to be an innovative, an innovative, out-of-the-box program and to meet the needs of kids who need that flexibility. So I just wanted to highlight that as far as the debit card, the allowable list, all of these policy changes seem to have a disproportionate impact on those families.
Thank you, Member Kervakis.
Yeah.
Member Corin, please, go ahead.
Thank you. I only have one question for the director, and then I do have five main comments that I'd like to make as a board member and five recommendations that I don't give the director for. So the one question I have for you right now, and thank you for your presentation, by the way, is, are you going to reinstate debit cards for all ESA families?
Member Corin, I'm sorry, Dr. Corin. All right. That is not the intention at this time. We're waiting for, I've had four people, as I said before, surface to say I need help because I don't have a debit card, and I was able to help them find how to get, for the four families, what they needed in class wallet. With our new RFP, we don't know what will happen. And we'll see who surfaces as far as different third-party providers. And then if anyone else has comments.
One question. I know you mentioned that, first set chapter three, which is related to the current vendor class wallet. The idea was to not include that in the handbook and just have it on the website. My concern is by a limit, that is our current vendor and will be considered our current vendor until whatever time happens in the future. Many families use the handbook as sort of their go-to guide. And while I think having all the information relevant to our current vendor and future vendors on the website and all that different process, I do think families use the handbook as their guide. So being able to describe the process of how do you set up an account, who do you contact, who do you email, all of those different things, I think, are incredibly helpful to families. So while website and making sure that portal or that landing page is currently up to date, keeping that information in the handbook, I think, is really, really important. Even in the introduction, it talks about the handbook is what it is for the timeframe, unless there's things that, like a vendor, the handbook will need to be updated. I just think that for families right now, we don't know who that will be, and I'm skeptical that we'll have a new vendor replaced by July 1, knowing the history of the program and knowing the long-term process it takes to onboard something like this. So I just would urge the department, when we discuss this next week, that we reconsider in making sure that we have vendor-related information in the handbook because it is what we have right now. that uh we reconsider and making sure that we have vendor related information in the handbook because it is what we have right now.
Yes, good question. Sure, yes. Dr. Corin, this is a feeling. Um even though so would you prefer to have in the handbook, everything that you have in here now for a class wallet and keep it that way, even though, even if we keep class wallet, that information will not be accurate because we will be changing the way class wallet works or a future vendor works?
Um I I think it's important that we provide the parents, families, the information as the program is. If the program changes, again, not knowing when the RFP will be, when a vendor is approved and when that will take effect, I'd be somewhat surprised that it would take effect within a three month or six month or nine month process. So I would, I would think that the department should take that into consideration. I think I I think it takes a while to onboard a new vendor, specifically a vendor that the complexity of the ESA program uh reming that through. Um I don't think the department wants that. I don't think that the Department of Treasury wants that. I don't think we want that. I think you want the seamless process and make sure that um families are able to use it, that but tested and uh family information is not ever disclosed and all of those things. So.
Member Bailey. Member Clark, some additional comments?
And and thank you. I don't have any more questions. Director.
Uh, member Kervikis, uh appreciate it. Go ahead, ju- jump right in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. Um we heard a lot at the last meeting about the policy change that um items that would be approved, kids with disabilities would have to be on the IEP. And I have some concern about that. I mean, we heard from parents pretty clearly on that too. Because um typically IEPs aren't that specific in terms of the actual materials that you're going to use day to day. The goals are much more high level. So I'd like to hear from Mr. Curse, how she wants to, what she's thinking on that and what she's hearing from parents and what the solution might be.
Great question, Dr. Corin, member Kervikis.
Kervikis.
Um yes, I will look at the um I'm hearing from parents, um definitely the that they want to make sure a qualified service provider can write that letter and not just a the person who writes the IEP or who is a qualified examiner according to statute. And that's absolutely the case and they can do that, whether or not it's a you know, occupational therapist or what have you, they can do that. Um one of the reasons why the the change in the handbook occurred was to make it more similar to the accreditation pages is to make it more broad, so everything is allowable. It sounds like people want us to determine exactly what type of therapies you can use and list those, even though the new therapies would not be in there rather than make it more broad for everyone to be able to use it. So instead of, I I can certainly put them back in. The only issue is, as we, when you have a handbook that's permanent, you know, for one year, you can't continue that. So we were trying to make it easier for families to be able to have all the therapies they need for special for special needs.
Any other uh online colleagues or virtual colleagues with a question? Seeing seeing hearing none, a member part.
So I'm going to address that issue first, actually, because I think there was a uh misunderstanding potentially with the uh the question that the board member asked. So on March sixth, there was an email that we received as ESA parents that said, quote, ESA students with special needs will always have the items listed on their IEP, IEE, ISP, MET, or five oh four documents. So that's not true. I have four kids with IDPs and I can't think of any of the items that we've purchased for them that were listed in those documents. That is what parents are addressing. The issue of the approved therapies is a separate issue. So families who are in the ESA program, in the qualifying special education category, they deserve to have accurate information presented to them about what they can and can't purchase. And for us to have to go get one of our therapists to write a letter, I'll I'll give you an example for one of my kids. Um we purchased one of the reader pens that, you know, kids with dyslexia often need where, you know, you scroll over uh the line, the text, it reads it. That's not in any of my three dyslexic kids, IEP, IEE, MET, it's nowhere. So then for me, and I haven't even seen the neuropsychologist that gave my children the diagnosis um in years. So that's the burden that we're talking about. Families in the special needs category would now be under. And so it's just my strong recommendation that um because that's not true, what was stated in the email is not true. ESA students with special needs will always have the items listed. That's just not true. Anybody that has a kid with special needs knows that that's that's not accurate. Um so I think that that statement should be corrected in the handbook and I'll just continue with my comments.
Please, yeah, absolutely.
Um so continue with my comments. Um on page twelve, on page twelve, uh and again, there were no page numbers in the draft, so I'm referencing what I believe to be the page number that was in the PDF. So on page twelve, a paragraph is added, which actually was not redlined in the redline copy. I think that was brought to the attention of of the board and others that the the redline copy with changes was not redlined properly. But in point one, it states, for supplemental items that are not typically known to be used for education, the parent will submit the following. One, proof of registration or enrollment in a class. Parenthesis, if a parent is going to teach this class at home, they must submit a note attesting to this when they submit in order. So I've never done that as a home educating parent with my kids on UK. I've never had to submit a note attesting that I'm actually teaching my kids with the item that I purchased that was supplemental. So I believe this should be removed. I'm really not sure why ADE, given all the feedback that we've heard about the challenges and the struggles at the department, would be wanting to create more work. Um and I believe that if a parent submits a curriculum that shows supplemental materials, which is defined in rule, which the state board worked on with parents in twenty twenty and has open rulemaking since then. Um if it's defined in rule and it's recommended or required by the curriculum, it should be approved. We should not have to fill out an attestation form. Home educating families on ESA should not have to fill out an attestation form. Every time we home educate with curriculum supplemental materials, as actually another, a couple of parents mentioned, when we sign our ESA contract, we agreed to educate our kids with the ESA funds. On the same page, also not redlined, number two, right underneath that says uh a new defi- well, a new definition is given, quote, formal curriculum. The definition is formal curriculum must include a scope, overview, objectives, or purpose, and sequence, plan of instruction. This is very concerning to me because this seems to be redefining curriculum in contradiction to the statute. And this is not in statute or rule. This is a big piece of what parents have brought up today. Uh the definition of curriculum and statute, ARS two four oh one two, is quote, curriculum means a course of study for content areas or grade levels, including any supplemental materials required or recommended by the curriculum or by the, yeah, by the curriculum, approved by the department. So to say now that curriculum must include scope, overview, objectives, purpose, sequence, and plan of instruction is actually limiting curriculum as defined in statute. This excluded curriculum that the legislature nor the state board in our rules excluded. So to me, formal curriculum and putting that in the handbook and it was also sent uh to parents in an email is unnecessarily unnecessarily limiting the definition of curriculum in statute and in rule. So later on this page, um the statutory definition is actually given for curriculum. Um but again, it's in contradiction to what's on the same page just above it. So imagine how confusing this is for families. Um just moving on to my last couple of points. The entire section on supplemental materials was removed. It should be reinstated. Families need guidance as to what supplemental materials are. And as of right now, the only reference is a footnote. Families deserve to have information that helps them make informed decisions about their purchases that are in line with the law. Contrary to what some people might think, we want things as black and white as possible at ESA families. And the more transparency that the department provides in the handbook, the better. Um I want to note also, someone may have already brought this to the department's attention, that on the thirteenth page, there's a note about insurance or surety bond payments. I'm not sure what the story is with the surety bond payments, but the way that the insurance is written, I believe, is in violation of statutes. ARS fifteen two four oh two CI says, quote, educational therapies from a licensed or accredited practitioner or provider, including and up to any amount not covered by insurance if the expense is partially paid by a health insurance policy for the qualified student. So with it just saying insurance, my fear is that parents might incorrectly think that they could use their ESA card for insurance premiums and that's not allowed. Um so for example, if you have insurance, your insurance covers speech therapy. You can let that hit your insurance and you can pay the difference uh with your ESA. That's something that we worked um you know, really hard to make sure parents understood. That's part of the law. Uh a few final things there and then my recommendations. The process that families should take to get preapproval of purchases was removed. It should be reinstated for clarity. The list of approved therapies was removed. This is incredibly confusing to families and arguably just creates more work for families. It should be reinstated for clarity. The process for how to create and submit, one of the most basic things that an account holder needs to know, which is how to create a help desk ticket, was removed. It should be reinstated for clarity. The written text of the statutes and rules should be included in the back of the handbook. That's something that I really requested last year only because it is real and the links are there, but if you're downloading the handbook or you're printing it out to go then and try to click through, find it and print it, just put it all in one place. Let's just make it super easy for parents to see the statute, all the statutes right there and the rules. My five recommendations, I already gave one earlier about the IDP IEE. Number one, the ability to access funds through the use of a debit card should remain for all ESA families. This has been an option for twelve years. To say that no new ESA families can have access is significantly limiting this program. This should be reinstated. Two, changes should not be made mid contract year, especially when it comes to things that are defined in statute and rule. Again, incredibly confusing for families. Three, I strongly um encourage the department to have an allowable's uh uh allowable's list. You'll recall that we had previous conversation that said that the rule actually doesn't require the detailed list that was up before, but the department can choose to keep that list up. They can choose to keep it up. They can choose to add to it. They can do all of those things. Um so just, I don't know why it's not there. I think it would, again, create really much needed transparency and access for families. And finally, given what we're hearing about the struggle with receipts and reimbursements, I would strongly recommend putting a pause on all changes that are being made and focus on current allowable purchases and getting those processed for families. I think those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, member Corin. Um any
Dr. Corin.
sponsor reaction?
Absolutely. Dr. Corin, member Corin. I look forward to working with you on March thirtieth because many of the community things that you just said are are not how we're communicating or what we're communicating. So I think a lot of clarity needs to to happen and and I'm, you know, sad that you didn't make our speaker meeting last week or, you know, the public meetings or reach out to me directly because I can write down a whole list and um clearly it's it's not something that you're understanding what we're saying, or maybe I need to say it a different way. I look forward to March thirtieth.
Let me clarify a little bit on that. So the board, when we have questions or concerns about things related to the handbook or related to the department, we share those concerns with staff. So I don't I don't appreciate like it looking like that I somehow didn't reach out to you. That's not what we do. We share our concerns with staff and staff reaches out to the department. I believe, how often do you all meet, Director Ross?
Do we meet with the department?
Correct.
Uh so we meet with superintendent or uh biweekly and then we meet at the team.
Okay, so when we have concerns, we share them with Director Ross and he brings them to you. Um as far as attending all those meetings, I'm like most of us here, uh we watch them after the fact. A lot of us do have other full time jobs. Um so I I lament that there is an insinuation that I'm somehow not engaged on the issue because I wasn't able to make those meetings. Um what I have done, what I try excessively hard to do is to read every single email that comes to the state board from parents. And I believe we got over six hundred pages, I think it was, of parent feedback. I do my best to try to actually respond to all of those parents and to hear their concerns. So I'm hopeful that a lot of those parents that sent all of those emails more than I've actually ever seen um as an ESA parent or as a state board member, reflect a lot of those concerns at the meeting as well.
Thank you. I look forward to March thirty.
President Corin, yeah, I'm to the board. If I could just clarify the March thirtieth, uh just we we will be posting that agenda after this meeting today. Uh the meeting on March thirtieth is an information only meeting. It's a chance for the department to present the updates on the draft uh to garner more feedback from board members and to garner more feedback from the public. Uh in discussions with Executive Director Curso, we've talked about in that March thirtieth meeting, drawing special attention to how the feedback from the public and the board has been reflected in the draft that will be shared on the thirtieth. Uh and then again, information only, there will be no voting. Uh but we did think it appropriate to give a chance for more feedback for another part of that process. And then the handbook will be brought to the April twenty fourth meeting for a vote. Right. And thank you, Executive Director Ross. I'll uh uh thank you for your 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 presentation um this morning and uh very early in my career, a mentor of mine taught me the term charitable interpretation, right? So uh I I think a charitable interpretation of everyone we've heard from today is we are all concerned about the children of Arizona, right? So I I I uh another phrase taught to me by this mentor was push on the bruise. I'm going to push on the bruise just here a little bit and ask you to uh uh give serious consideration and thought uh to to allowing uh debit cards to remain. Um I I do it resonates to me when I hear that for many um that paying in forward and hoping for reimbursement later is simply not an option. And as I shared uh last month, I think uh the um the choice of accountability or or service to our parents is a false one, right? We have to do not this or that. We need to do this and that. And I trust that the conversation on the thirtieth and ultimately uh what this board will consider on the twenty fourth will will strike that um excuse me, strike that balance. So with that, I appreciate your time here. Thank you.
Dr. Corin, if I can just mention, I
Yeah.
agree with you on the debit card. Um I was a mom in the program for nine years and we only had a debit card for many years and it worked seamlessly. Um the way it's working now is much more difficult. I was on a call this past week with thirteen EAD administrators in the country. And I asked them, they kept saying reimbursements was the most difficult. And I said, well, for us, the debit card, I'm trying to to get those receipts and they're not turning it in. They said, well, no state has debit cards, only Arizona. And so we'll need to look into that.
Thank you. And thank you again. All right, so I'm going to move the doing okay powering through. We're going to move on to five B. Looking forward to a presentation and discussion of Arizona's free application for federal financial aid or the FASSA initiatives. Uh Director Ross?
President Corin, Superintendent Corin, members of the board, uh today meeting us, we have Andrea Glenn from the Arizona Department of Education and Julie Sand and Roxanne Murphy from the Arizona Board of Regents to discuss the work that they and other groups are doing to advance Arizona's FASFA initiatives.
Fantastic. Thank you and welcome.
Superintendent Corin, members of the board, what we're giving this uh I'll just kind of start off. Uh again, my name is Andrea Glenn. I'm the director of post-secondary and community engagement for the Arizona Department of Education. And with me, this is a collaborative effort that we wanted to present. It's Julie Sands from Arizona Department of Education and Roxanne Murphy. Uh so we just wanted to go over some of, I think, things that we're really proud of uh that the state has been doing in regards to our uh FASSA completion and FASSA application processes that we've set up uh to ensure that all students have access to resources related to FASSA, that parents have education support around what FASSA is and how it can help your students as they embark on their post-secondary endeavors. Um so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the chairman, who's going to kick us off with just going over as a state where we sit for um FASSA at this time.
And so we just wanted to provide you with a brief history of statewide FASSA resources and kind of bring us to current. So in nineteen eighty six, uh College Bowl Sunday was the really FASSA campaign that the Arizona uh Post-Secondary Commission led. Um these were FASSA efforts at the high school level. There are also some community efforts as well. Um since then, in two thousand sixteen, we started looking at FASSA data and how Arizona can improve on their FASSA completion efforts. Um with that, with the um Governor Ducey's former administrator uh administration support, we established the Arizona FASSA Challenge. So this was a challenge to encourage more seniors to complete the FASSA, also highlight all the best practices and great work that our high schools are doing in FASSA completion. This FASSA Challenge uh started in two thousand eighteen and continues now. Um we highlighted uh over thirty high schools for all their work in FASSA completion. And on a few slides of that coming up, we'll show you a little bit more about the program. Um and then two thousand nineteen, we developed statewide FASSA resources. So some of you may be familiar with our texting at Benji. Um, and then 2019, we developed statewide FASPA resources. So some of you may be familiar with our texting app, Benji. Um, so that is in partnership with Education Board, who's one of our strategic partners. Um, and then in 2020, when we had COVID, we really pivoted and started creating virtual FASPA resources that we still have today. Um, and this really helps, um, really scale our FASPA resources one-on-one with students. So a student doesn't have to worry about having transportation to a certain college access organization. Um, it's simply they can just log in and get help one-on-one. And then in 2020, 21, we, uh, enhanced our FASPA training resources for counselors. We have our FASPA bootcamps for counselors to give them. All the information that they need on FASPA completion to help their students and families complete the application. And then most recently, uh, this past fall, we launched Arizona College Connect, which is a resource for all high schools and districts. So that they can see where their students are with their FASPA completion and it also encourages them to complete the application. It has FASPA resources and tools on it as well. Um, so just as far as our statewide progress goes, um, as of March 4th, we're currently at a 30% FASPA completion rate. So about three out of every 10 students have completed the FASPA. Um, each year, we also establish a goal for the state. So the goal would be a goal for us, North Star, for us to achieve. A certain number of students to complete FASPA. This year, we wanted to pivot a little bit. So instead of actually having a set number, we wanted to encourage each school to increase their FASPA completion rate by 5% or more. Um, as of March 3rd, we have over, um, close to 150 schools that have already reached this, this goal, which is amazing. Um, and then at the bottom here, we wanted to include some. Basically some stats on how many students have left, uh, Pell Grant dollars, simply Arizona high school graduates for the class 2021. So these are federal Pell Grant dollars that they left on the table. Because they did not complete the application, the FASPA, and this is for 2021 and the most recent class of 2022. Um, in addition to statewide resources, we also have a public FASPA completion dashboard. So this dashboard is completely public and it has aggregated FASPA data. So this FASPA data tracks our state's FASPA completion rate, also for the counties and for the individual high schools, districts and charter holders. So this is the great ways that, um, any educator, families, students can see their FASPA completion rate for the state, other schools doing. Or even see how other schools outside of their district are doing as well. Um, in addition, I wanted to chat a little bit more about the FASPA Challenge and our FASPA Coalition really help make way and support these efforts statewide. So as I mentioned, in 2018, our FASPA Challenge was started with the partnership of Governor Ducey, uh, former Governor Ducey. So we started the statewide initiative to increase FASPA completion rates among our high school seniors. With this, we also create a monthly FASPA newsletter. So this newsletter goes out to over 830 educators on a monthly basis. We also have annual recognition awards. We've awarded over $10,000 in scholarships to students as well. We have a dedicated, uh, program webpage on the Aboard website. And we also, um, dedicate statewide FASPA resources, toolkits and charts. That way counselors have things ready to go that they can easily implement. Um, and give out to seniors and their families. In addition, we also have a coalition. So this coalition was established in 2018 and over the years, we. Um, collaborated with over 30 post-secondary institutions, college access organizations, community organizations, city and government officials. So all these folks have stake, are stakeholders within FASPA completion. We all work together to set our annual statewide goal. Um, lead strategic efforts and collaborations. We also collaborate on FASPA outreach efforts to make sure that it's statewide and equitable for all students. We support high school educators, students and families with FASPA initiatives. And we also plan and host annual FASPA kickoff events and trainings that are completely free for all educators. So we never charge for any of these resources. Everything's completely free for all families. Educators and high schools. Um, so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Andrea. I'm going to chat a little bit more about some of our strategic partnerships that we have.
So out of the coalition over the past few years, we've noticed that there needs to be a broader effort around outreach, marketing and just kind of debunking events that are out there around what FASPA means for families. Um, if a student is still at a FASPA, does that mean they have to go to college? Um, does that mean they have to accept all the dollars that are being presented to them? And so through this coalition, we've started a partnership of Valley Leadership and Cox charities. And strategically have invested both in-kind and monetary donations to Cox charities to help with the statewide FASPA campaign. That provides outreach to families so that they can understand what FASPA truly is. Um, one, you know, we know that there's a direct correlation with students who, um, actually. Uh, submit their FASPA. 84% according to INCAN who submit a FASPA will matriculate to their post in their endeavors. Because of that high level, then we want to ensure that. Students at least have that asset opportunity. Um, so through this partnership with Valley Leadership and Cox charities. We have, uh, put in, um, quite a bit of different resources you can see here. One of them is, um, if any of you guys have any football players at home, I know I do. We love our football here in Arizona, especially the Glenn household. And so there is a commercial that televives during these special football games that they promote throughout the year with Cox. And in those commercials, um, there is information and resources related to FASPA that are particular for just FASPA updates federally, but also statewide resources that they can get plugged into as well. In addition, we, um, know that we wanted to partner with Sinoran Living and other outreach to ensure that our Spanish-speaking families have resources and information in their native language. And so we have that. Um, we have some social media promotion as well. Students actually about a year ago participated in some top campaigns, received some scholarship funding. But it was also them being the driver of that content and being able to put that on websites, get their peers excited about FASPA, understanding what FASPA means and when it is. Um, and then we launched a fast, easyfasspa.org website. This website has a plethora of resources. If you can see, um, the Arizona Ask Benji Chatbot, which again is powered by, um, ASU and Education Board of Arizona being the organization and entity that houses it. We have the FASPA hotline. Um, I'll go into that in a little bit later. And then the FASPA Virtual Assistant and then various different community workshops that are out there for family members and educators and counselors are taken. The next thing that I just wanted to talk about was our menu of technical assistance support that we have, um, related to building the capacity of our schools around FASPA. Um, so we know in Arizona, we still have a crisis with our student-to-counselor ratio. Counselors can't be the end-all-be-all for all of our students. And we want to ensure that counselors have all of, you know, the information readily accessible, but also that there's technical support that's offered throughout the state to provide wraparound services for students and families. Um, so in that, uh, the education, the Arizona Department of Education invested last year in some ESSER dollars. Um, and some of that investment went towards, uh, Education Board Arizona, giving them access and funding for, um, expanding and offering their courses called CAP, College Access Professional Courses. These courses once were charged for about $25 to $75 per course. That an educator, counselor, even a parent could take to build their knowledge about how to help their students, um, understand the process of post-secondary planning and implementation. Um, but now through the funding that PDE gives, these courses are free. Um, and so those will continue to be free until 2023. Uh, if you're a counselor, they can also use those to get, uh, continuing ed certification as well for their cert. We also have Ask Benji FASPA Chatbot, which we talked about. This is a free partnership as well. So, um, Arizona Department of Education has continued to fund this until 2024. Uh, this chatbot, um, allows schools to actually engage in a data sharing agreement. Uh, they could send a school personalized message about, you know, a FASPA event maybe that they have coming up. Um, if they have a college application campaign coming up, they can push those messages out. But then a student could also opt into this service as well. And get information if their school doesn't. And as well as they opt in, they can opt out as well. Um, as Julie mentioned, we have the statewide FASPA campaign for the statewide FASPA kickoff. Uh. The attendance in the last couple of years has been about 398 virtual attendees in these kickoffs. So we can see that there's definitely a need. Um, and we'll continue to provide that service to our counselors and our educators out in the field. Um, and that kickoff is where we have a preliminary session. We announce the partnership of the governor's office where our statewide goal is. And then we have breakout sessions to build the capacity of our counselors and our educators who are providing that support along with FASPA federal updates. Um, we, in just a couple of weeks, have our second annual AZ Counselor Spring Training Event. That is an opportunity similar to the kickoff virtual again, to allow counselors to come and understand, you know, what some of the resources that are out there. Get some updates. Um, as you guys might be aware, there are some federal changes coming down for FASPA in 2023. So getting an opportunity to plan proactively ahead of this next school year so that they have an opportunity to meet with their representatives from their different, um, higher-end institutions. Um, to meet with different, uh, folks in the field as well as different high school counselors across the state to hear best practices and proper practices to leverage on their campuses. Um, we have a FASPA toolkit. So these are all hyperlinks that you could put on there. It's a really accessible toolkit that educators and schools can download and be able to move on their campus from anything to planning a FASPA event to supporting families on understanding who. A parent is as defined by FASPA. Um, and then we have the one-on-one FASPA appointments. This one started about a year and a half ago through. A grant we received from INCAN in the midst of COVID. We're pretty proud about this one just for the fact that one, it's continued to be. Of service where students can sign up virtually on Callanly for a one-on-one FASPA appointment. It routes them to a FASPA expert Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to typically 5:00 PM. They could have just one question about the FASPA or they could have their entire application, um, be of service and help through that entire process virtually. Families can do it in the comfort of their home. They don't have to leave their home and they're able to get the assistance that they need to completing a, a pretty complicated application. Um, in addition, we have the FASPA Bootcamp. So as we've been providing these workshops throughout, or the FASPA, FASPA over the last few years. We noticed that we probably needed to do more to build the capacity of our schools and educators as opposed to just having one event. We. Offer a committee up to the FASPA event. It's called the FASPA Bootcamp. It starts with, um, on week one, everything you need to know before the FASPA. So how to sign up for your FSAID. So leading off, um, to everything after the FASPA being the last presentation, which teaches, um, families, educators, parents, students. About the verification process and to ensure that now that they've applied for the FASPA, they can actually access those dollars and use them for their post-secondary, um, endeavors. I'm going to turn it over now to Roxanne.
Good afternoon. I get to share about our, um, partnerships and programs that were launched this year to support FASPA completion in Arizona. So. Just going to start off with the Arizona Cactus League partnership. So in January of this year, we partnered with the Arizona Cactus League as well as Ask Benji. Um, to encourage college bound Arizona high school seniors to complete. Their free application for federal student aid. So students who completed the FASPA were able to score up to four free Arizona Cactus League spring. Um, to attend a baseball game. Uh, the partnership went extremely well. There were 829 Arizona high school seniors who received tickets to attend a game. Um, and originally the partnership was supposed to, um, provide 750 students, but because it's so successful, Arizona Practice League. Decided to support more students with, um, receiving spring training tickets. Uh, within the first week of the partnership launching, we had 400 students who submitted entries to receive the board free tickets. And we've seen that overall, um, our state's FASPA completion rate increased by 2% um, when this partnership was in place. And the next partnership that I wanted to share about is the FASPA Peer Coach Program. So the FASPA Peer Coach Program is modeled after national best practices. So in the fall of 2022, um, the Arizona Board of Regents, we partnered with 24 high schools. Um, mostly in metro Phoenix as well as Tucson to deploy 108 FASPA peer coaches. So these FASPA peer coaches are high school seniors. Who are excited about sharing FASPA resources with their peers. Um. So these FASPA peer coaches, they do is they help at large-scale FASPA events that we know that our high schools are hosting. As well as providing one-on-one support for students and families. And the majority of what they're doing is sharing about the resources that we're sharing here today. To let students and families know that there's three resources that they can access to, um, complete the FASPA and potentially receive, um, federal student aid. And then the last, uh, partnership that I just wanted to share about too was the Winter FASPA Calling Campaign. So, um, the Arizona Board of Regents, the Arizona Department of Education, Ask Benji, College Connect Tempe. Um, the governor's office that we've based in families for their mayor report program and College Depot Wheel Partner. Um, from about December 15th until the end of January to essentially call Arizona students and families and share with them. The first and foremost, the FASPA form was available for them to complete and also to share about the free resources that we're sharing with you all today. So. Um, one of the highlights of this winter FASPA calling campaign was within Tempe Union District. Um, from December 15th to January 30th, there was a 9% FASPA completion, um, rate increase for their district as compared to about half a percent. For the state. So, um, we received really positive feedback from students and families, just really appreciative of the opportunity to learn more about. The free application for federal student aid. And then, um, also another highlight was just that during that timeframe as well, the virtual FASPA. Um, uh, assistance appointments. We had 114 students and families across the state to give me which of those two. So. Okay, I'll pass it back to Julie. Um, and just lastly, I wanted to chat about Arizona College Connect. So this is a new database that we launched in partnership with the Ellis Education Foundation. And through a data sharing agreement with the Arizona Department of Education. So this is a new innovative database that high schools and districts can take advantage of. Um, if they sign a data sharing agreement with Arizona Board of Regents and it provides them with their student file with FASPA data for their high school seniors so that can help. Those seniors identify who has completed an FASPA application, students haven't, um, students that have an incomplete application. Um, and also help students with any hurdles they have or any challenges to refer them to any statewide resources or help them one-on-one. With this new database, we just launched it four months ago. Um, so in that time, we have 251 high schools that have an active data sharing agreement with us. We have 351 individual users that have been set up since October. So these users are principals, administrators, high school counselors. Um, we have a 79% usage rate among those 350 that have an active agreement with us. And as of March 3rd, over 14,000 site visits in the last 90 days, I should say. And then we have 286 unique views. Um, this portal that we created, um, was something that was built from the ground to up. It's something innovative that other states do not have. Um, other states do provide the same data. However, it's not, um, in a comprehensive, innovative, uh, type of format that we're delivering. It's high schools and an easy-to-use format as well since. FASPA completion in numbers can be very complicated. We did roundtables, conducted roundtables with counselors and educators this past spring. So when we built this system. Um, it does take into consideration all of the feedback that we've ever seen from counselors and educators throughout the state. Um, and I'm going to hand it back to Andrea. Just to.
Just to close with, um, as you guys know, we have ECAP. And so with ECAP, uh, ADE invested in my future through our partnership with Pipeline AZ. Um, we've been in talks with him as of recent to add all of the resources. There are some current resources that they have with FASPA, but we've been in talks more intimately about adding that as one of the ECAP, um, checklist items. Knowing that students don't necessarily have to complete a FASPA in order to graduate from an Arizona high school, but at least if they see that as an item that is suggested that they. Complete as a part of their ECAP, it might be more lovely that a student would actually complete their actual FASPA. Um, so I wanted to highlight that. And then just to share, you know, the various different resources that ADE offers in terms of our data sharing. So. As you guys are aware, we have the post-secondary feedback reports that we, through that data, um, ASU decisions there. And, uh, Helios has been able to provide to schools so that they can individually see how their schools are doing and how students are purchasing year after year when they graduate from their, uh, different institutions. Um, and then our partnership strategically with Aboard over the past three years with our student directory information, which gives them access to being able to provide the ACC FASPA dashboard. Um, and then our more recent partnership that we have with them is giving them, um, class lists of our ninth through 12 graders. So that they strategically can send out information related to FASPA and all of the institutional supports related to planning for college, um, as their students are getting ready to graduate from our Arizona high schools. That is all we have for you guys. It was a warm, we thank you guys for your time and I've been updating questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Questions or comments? Yeah. Okay, I'll start with Dr. Clay and then number Katniss.
Hi, um, read this up. My, my concern is that. I didn't hear anything about partnerships with county superintendents in the counties. You want this, you want anything to work in education in this state. You give it to them first. They will make sure this information goes out. Um, this is some great information, but, um. I don't know. I don't know what you're doing about it. I have to go and dig for it where I should not be suing you guys. You need to pursue us. Okay. And say, listen, you may need this on your website. Let's go ahead and sit down and brainstorm on how we can raise the percentage of students that are, um. Completing FASPA because that's the problem. The other issue is, I didn't hear anything about rural schools. I've heard Tucson, I've heard. The big cities, but I'm, I'm, I'm a very rural school, I'm in county. And we're not getting that, that support and we're not getting that, um, that, that information that we might be, might be getting up here. So I would really like you to start working with us so that we can get that information to everyone. On a good note, ECAT is a big thing to me. My Future Arizona is a very big thing to me because I used to teach the old AZ CIS. Okay. And one of the biggest things that the wonderful initiative we had was where is, where is the FAFSA in this? This should be part of the ECAT. This should be at least one of the things that a student should be doing at twelve grade, eleven, twelve grade level. And that should be put in in the student's eyes right off the bat. So we need to get FAFSA really to all the students need to know about it. And we need to know about it across the board. So definitely, I would, I would really like to hear what you're doing with My Future Arizona. There should be something in the software where students should have to end the inter-curricular with the ECAT. So I'm, yes, thank you for that. I would definitely like to work with you in the future so we can fix our FAFSA problem because it is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clay. Member Katniss.
Thank you, Dr. Korf. First off, I get really excited about this. So thank you for your time. I know that Executive Director Ross, I asked if this presentation could happen, particularly because there's a lot of really good things happening and we want to try to help get the word out. And so I guess like my, my first question is, first off, I love the creativity. I love the different incentives with the Cactus League. I think that's really awesome for kids. The one-on-one Calendly appointments, bootcamps, Benji, the a hundred and eight FAFSA peer coaches, all that's phenomenal. How are you right now getting the word out, I guess, to different high schools? That's my first question.
Julie can probably piggyback. So in terms of all the FAFSA support, definitely the outreach that we've been doing with the campaigns with Cox Cherries going in and actually sitting in district offices as well and providing outreach and support. We just reached out to a few rural districts. So for Dr. Clay to yours, trying to do some partnership with them certainly in the summer. We know that, you know, counselors are typically a little I mean, say, passive. They definitely are not able to be with us. So we're, we're trying to figure out a way to partner with our, our schools so that we can provide some type of capacity building workshops over the summer to let them know about this. Knowing counselors are in the midst of their scheduling, we're trying to figure out strategically what would be best to do that. The other things that we have, like I said, is our partnership with A Bor and so giving information to them that they're putting on their websites. We send out, there was quite a bit of different newsletters and different chains of information that we sent out through that way. We have participated in previous years in some of the mayor roundtables to let them know about some of this information too. Those are just a few, and I'll send it over to a few of my colleagues if they want to add to that list.
I think Andrea covered it. I think the biggest thing is our monthly newsletter that we send out to. We also utilize our FAFSA coalition. So many of them have partnerships with high schools throughout the state. And we, you know, basically share content and information to make sure that we're getting word out, scaling information. And then also Benji helps a lot of them as well because that's our main direct communication with students and families. Since everything that we communicate out with typically goes to the high schools in order for that to information to be relied to the students and families.
What, what's the earliest that a student can apply for FAFSA?
FAFSA comes out October first every year. But this upcoming FAFSA season, there's going to be some patients coming to it. So currently, right now, the Department of Education has not released a date. So we're up in the air right now. I'm not sure it's going to come out on October first this year or not. But typically, it does come out October first. And we plan all of our events and trainings are on that date.
That was sort of a setup question because I'm a, I'm a teacher by trade, but I also run a nonprofit organization that helps first-graduate students go to college. And so like, this is a huge thing for us. But I think that one of the things that's really helpful is whenever kids are learning about this at an earlier age. So it's not just your senior year that you're learning about this. And the state has some wonderful programs in terms of, you know, a ninth grade taking the ACT Aspire. So it isn't, and then eleventh grade, you take the ACT. Perhaps those dates could be aligned with education about FAFSA later on, since all the kids are going to be taking those at school.
I was just going to say, I think we'd be a miss if we didn't also highlight all of the College Access Centers. So we have some amazing partners in our College Access Centers that have been also getting out that information and they're strategically located regionally throughout the state. College Depot and Tempe College Connect are some of them, but we also have some in Tucson as well. And so those are opportunities where families are getting some of that information. One of, I would say, silver linings during COVID is when things went on a pause, we did do some FAFSA drive-in events, especially in counties that, you know, didn't necessarily have those services and schools were shut, shut down. Providing opportunities for families to drive in, get their FAFSA completed in the comfort of their bar from a FAFSA expert. We even had printers. I can remember some of those long days where there was a print machine, you know, their families could print if they had to do a wet signature to turn that in. We would mail that in for, for those families at that particular time. But I did want to highlight all of the amazing work that our College Access Centers be a leader in some of the other entities and organizations that have helped throughout this entire process over the last four years.
And I guess my reason for bringing that up is you decide pretty early on if college is going to be affordable for you or not. And so the earlier on, the kids are getting access to this information, the more likely they are to go to college. And so you said at the beginning, it's three out of every ten kids right now fill it out. Do you know, this is just out of curiosity, how many, what, what percent of that of eligible kids are filling it out? Because ten kids doesn't necessarily mean they're all eligible.
I don't have that breakdown of data right now, but just my guess, I would say probably about eighty percent of students that do the law of the FAFSA are eligible for at least Pell Grants or at least some form of Pell Grant, but all students are eligible for some type of financial aid, whether that be subsidized on subsidized loans. Some of them also use it to complete the FAFSA or scholarships. So we encourage all students to complete it. And that's a message that we definitely try to enforce and to just bring to the table for students in, you know, eighth grade, ninth grade. There's definitely a stigma out there that only certain populations are eligible for FAFSA.
Yeah, I think that's a huge miscommunication. So that's, that's why I brought that up is because I think that we have to do a better job of getting the word out and I'm willing to help in any way I can. And then my last question, sorry, I get really.
Please go ahead.
My, my last question is, do you know which high school, because you talked about, I want to get it right, Arizona Connect, is that what it was called? Where you, oh, you, college connect, thank you. Which high school is like doing the best of this? Like they have a hundred percent like completely get them. Do you also know like which schools are not? And maybe there's, there's reasons why. And obviously, like personnel is important, like whenever you have people that are really passionate at sites. But also, you, you brought up, bring up counselors and different people that would be eligible to get trained on this. There's also, you know, a ton of educators, like myself, teachers that would also be willing to do those things, especially because we see kids day to day, every single day in our classrooms. So like, how do we get more teachers involved too? Along with what Dr. Clay was saying, you know, we want to emphasize all of our stakeholders and like get the word out as much as we can to help the most kids.
Absolutely. So we do know the schools that have high FAFSA completion rates, we track those. We have the data, you know, schools that need maybe some additional supports. So we have all of that data available and we do track it. We do reach out to schools that may have a low FAFSA completion rate or maybe lagging in FAFSA completion compared to the prior year. One of our schools that do amazing continuously, just because of their supportive administration and also their counseling department is phenomenal and really believes in this work, is San Luis High School that's in Yuma.
If you didn't mention it, I was going to. Sidewinders.
Suppers. As I mentioned, the counseling department is an amazing, phenomenal job. Currently, right now, there still is almost a seventy percent FAFSA completion rate, which is amazing. And, and the last couple of years, they've almost achieved close to an eighty percent FAFSA completion rate at the end of the school year. So they're definitely leaders in this state because of all the support that their students get. And it's also building a college-going atmosphere. So those freshman students see, you know, seniors completing it. And then it just triples up all the way to their senior year. So it's building that kind of a culture on their campus, which is amazing. And then other schools that we've seen are, you know, Glendale College Prep is currently right now leading. We also see University High School in Tucson, who's one of our leaders. Independence High School in Glendale, Union is doing amazing job. There's a number of schools, I want to name all of them. But we definitely do have leaders in this work and then others who we intentionally want to reach out to and do reach out to to help and provide strategic outreach and support so we can.
I have a lot of ideas, so maybe we could all talk later. But one final thing, I guess, is that the incentives that you offered for high school kids, if there's incentives for schools as well, I think that we've all seen schools get really excited whenever there's different incentives for them as well.
Yeah, well, with the Arizona FAFSA Challenger incentive is a trophy. So that's, you know, friendly competition there. But we are working on some incentives to incentivize the school, whether that be you know, grants, you choose for their classrooms. It could also be, you know, performance professional development. We are brainstorming that as a coalition to see what would be best and taking feedback from counselors, administrators, and teachers to make sure that they're in this conversation since they are with these students. They're on a day-to-day basis and all seniors have to take, you know, certain subjects. So they're, making sure that they're in this conversation as well.
Thank you.
Super cool trophy. And if you want to see it, come on down to give it away. Make it available for viewing. A couple, a couple of quick, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, please. Yeah, please, yeah.
Is it possible, first, thank you so much for your presentation. I have a copy of it. I'm going to share it. Is it possible that we get some data on the schools across Arizona that's about their percentage on completion? I would really, really be interested in that and I would share that moving forward to help the cost.
Absolutely. We'd love to also hear you back. I hope you're better for a group.
Oh, yes. I look forward to it. Dr. Clay, in a personal force within the board, we also did include A Bor's college achievement and performance reports in this item and simply so that way there's some data available for you there as well.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I, I share, member Katniss's enthusiasm and passion for this. Super proud of what Arizona Western College has been able to do in partnership with Yuma Union High School in terms of of this, because we know FAFSA completion leads to college attendance, which leads to lives being transformed. So just love Ask Benji, absolutely love it. It's, it's been a game changer for us. I love the concept of involving community partners and parents. I know my friend Stephanie Parr is doing amazing things with parents, ASU's American Treatment Academy. For decades have been doing amazing things with parents. That's part of the secret sauce down in Yuma County is involving parents, involving students early. And I would also offer the assistance of the Arizona Community College Consortium, right? AC4, the ten community colleges. There are, there is a community college in every community, rural or urban, and we would be happy to lend our assistance to this. So and again, a big shout out to Principal Lucky Arviso and down in San Luis, Arizona, for the amazing work that he's done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
President Korf, Superintendent Orms of the Board, I'm also going to leverage my three years of working at Chris Blen, who was brilliant, to see if maybe they could deliver a similar presentation to the county suits in the next quarterly meeting. If Dr. Clay would be interested. And then just, sorry, one more piece. I sit on the Mayor's Education Roundtable representing the Board and FAFSA completion is their role for this year. So this is aligning very nicely with what's happening around the state level as well.
Great. Thank you, Executive Director Ross. And any other comments or questions? Hearing none, again, thank you for your presentation. Nicely done. So Executive Director Ross, I may have been in my excitement to get to the FAFSA discussion. Looked past the fact that we, we do in fact need a vote on the previous item. Can, can you explain, please?
President Korf, Superintendent Orms, I, my apologies as well. The item A was in fact the ESA handbook is a voting item. And so we do need officially to, to take a vote on that item and then we can move to item C.
And just for clarification, we're, we're voting to accept the, the draft that's been presented.
To approve the draft or to not approve the draft.
Okay. But again, it's a draft, but it is a voting item. I guess I'm clarifying for my own and maybe others.
To, to vote in the affirmative would end the process. It wouldn't be, that was the draft that was voted on and accepted. To vote in the negative would be then to have the draft go back for further iterations.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Again, because I'm not the brightest crayon in the box, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure I'm understanding. So a vote in the negative is to send the draft that we, we just saw today back. We'll have a meeting on the thirtieth and it'll come back to us on the twenty-fourth.
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure everyone.
Ask your question.
Yeah, please.
So, so if we vote to reject it, then we also would be able to give feedback.
Yes.
I, Ie, having it in Spanish or other languages as well, things like that? Or is that not part of the draft? I guess like language is a question I have.
A, a vote in the negative, and I'll look for, you're, you know, kind of recognizing this as correct. A vote in the negative keeps the, the handbook open for further comments, for further clarification, for further requests for changes from board members or the public as a whole.
I, I guess my question is, is language a change?
So President Korf, Superintendent Orms of the Board, member Katniss says that would be a suggestion. And that is a suggestion that you did make. Yeah, so, so that is absolutely part of the feedback that we will give to the department. Depending, I'm not assuming, depending on the nature of the vote today, we would have a meeting on the thirtieth. And that would be an informational meeting only. Again, feedback can be given and will be given by both board members and the public. And then a final vote would occur in April.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Executive Director Ross, and that has, has made it quite clear to me and I assume others, and I, I appreciate that. So with that, with that in mind, do I have a motion to, I, I will, I will ask for a motion to reject the ESA handbook for the 2023-2024 school year, which again will allow us to have a special meeting on the thirtieth and ultimately vote on a potentially revised handbook on the twenty-fourth of April. So again, do I have a motion to reject the ESA handbook as presented? So I'm going to go, member Katniss, and would you allow that as a second? And as a second, by Dr. Clay, any conversation or discussion? I see all the cameras on. I appreciate that. All in favor of approving the motion to reject the ESA handbook as presented, draft as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? March passes. Thank you. Now I will move us on to five, which is presentation and discussion of the State Board of Education educator discipline process. Director Ross?
President Korf, Superintendent Orms. As Deputy Wonders and I joined back in January, you know, we came to realize very quickly that a good portion of the board's time in the meetings is going towards educator discipline. We thought this would be a good time to have the brilliant Garnett Burns from our investigative enforcement team come and present on that process to talk about some exciting things that are happening in that process. And then to answer any questions you may have, especially because so much of the board's agenda is, is occupying this space. So again, we have with us somebody who makes Deputy Director Wonders and I look very good on a data basis, Garnett Burns.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead.
Good morning, President Korf, Superintendent Orms and members. So the slideshow you're going to see today, I'm not going to really speak on the items on there. It's going to be an overview. So that's more for you to read, just so you know, moving forward. Could you first slide please? Thank you. So as you know, the board has twenty-two staff currently. Thirteen of those staff are solely dedicated to educator discipline. So eleven of those staff members are the investigative unit. Dave Spelich is the chief of the investigative unit. He oversees all of those members. Then we have two lead investigators and we have eight investigators that follow beneath them, as well as two administrative assistants that help with the cases. One of those administrative assistants focuses fully on the FCCs that come in, which are fingerprint clearance cards. The other one focuses on opening cases, requesting documents for the investigators. I then am the director of enforcement actions and I have one admin that works with me. So that's the whole thirteen together. So when I started at the board in 2014, the IU only had four investigators at that time and one administrative assistant. In fifteen, when I became the chief, I began reconstructing the investigative unit, which included changing the unit from an all civilian investigative unit to retired law enforcement investigators. So as of now, So as of now, all the investigators we have are retired law enforcement. They also have administrative investigative experience, if that makes sense, like professional standards, that sort of thing. So they fit in perfectly in this unit. Um, the investigators, or the, the IU investigates all allegations of misconduct. We have to determine our jurisdiction, it is limited, we only have jurisdiction over individuals. So we don't have jurisdiction over districts or curriculum, that sort of thing. It's an individual person that a per, that you have to complain about for us to be able to take action on that. Um, so when we determine our jurisdiction, that, everything that comes to us includes fingerprint clearance card change notification, notifications from the Department of Public Safety, all applications that are forwarded from the certification department, or at the education, Department of Education, sorry. And all complaints that are submitted by the districts or the public, which come in form of a statement of allegations packet from the public. And then the districts have a process that they go through that report directly to the department that pushes to the board. On the next slide. So the Department of Public Safety, they send all fingerprint clearance card notification change statuses to the investigative unit. That means anyone who's been arrested, um, and their card was suspended or revoked for that crime, or someone who was denied their fingerprint clearance card in the application process due to prior criminal history. And that's all predicated by statutes that are in place right now. Some of our rules have been formed around that, like, um, thirteen oh nine is formed around the rules that, that fall for the fingerprints clearance cards. NASDAQ houses the national database where all the participant, participating states enter educator discipline, so that other states have, other states have a resource to go to to look up educators who come and apply. So if someone from Michigan was to come here and apply, we would then run them through NASDAQ to make sure that they had no disciplinary issue in Michigan at that time. There are a few states that still don't participate in that, um, we're working on getting that all taken care of. Um, and this actually helps to pass the trash issues that we've had in the past. Um, where one teacher will go, it, it helps here with the districts as well, right? Now they're checking our database so that they see if there's discipline, and we house that discipline from other states in our database as well. So even if the educator isn't here certified and we haven't taken action, but they've had action somewhere else, and they come to work in a charter school, that charter school has the ability to look up in our database that, that educator's information and discipline, and we can inform decision on that moving forward. The Department of Education sends all applications to us that had previous discipline by the board or by another licensing agency, as well as anyone who has marked yes to the criminal history information or, um, a question on there about being involved in, um, in an investigation with the DCS. Um, so all of those are sent to us, we do an investigation into those. We determine whether or not, or the investigative unit determines whether or not those applications can be approved without a hearing, or they need to go to the Professional Practices Advisory Committee for a hearing. Um, so this slide shows your source of investigations, which this one is broader than the last one was, because this is literally where all of the cases come from. So you'll see some that have just a few numbers, some that have a lot of numbers. Um, so outside of applications, the certification unit does send us other cases. And those cases involve people who may have submitted documents that were forged, like transcripts or their high school diploma, um. And also people who are disruptive when they come in, threatening to the staff. If we have, you know, they try to be very pleasant, but when people come in and are threatening to staff, we take that seriously. So they will report those people to us as well. Um, upon a conviction of a specific crime, the courts are also required to notify us. They have individuals fill out documents to say whether or not they're a certified educator or they teach in a school in Arizona. Those are then sent to us, and then we review those to see whether we'll open a case on those or not. Law enforcement agencies will regularly reach out and, and inform us of ongoing investigations in sexual misconduct that they're conducting so that we're aware. Media reports come from, um, the investigators who we've set up a, it's called, we call it our Google Alerts. And basically that just pulls from the internet all over whether an educator in Arizona um, has been disciplined, and so one investigator is assigned every day to go through and review those. When they find a name, they go into our database and they compare those, and then we'll determine whether or not a case needs to be opened. We do not accept anonymous complaints, which means that any statement of allegation packet that comes into the department does need to be signed and notarized by the complaining party. And that is so that we have someone to reach out to, to go back to for more information so that we can effectively investigate an allegation. Just because someone files a complaint, I, I do want to be clear, every complaint is investigated completely. What that looks like is different for each one, because each complaint is different. Each complaint also results in a closure notice to the person who, who submitted that complaint, or it results in a hearing or disciplinary action. Excellent, thank you. So as the Director of Enforcement Actions, I oversee the disciplinary process from the beginning to the end. Last year, the board received funding for an educator discipline administrative assistant and director. The director mentioned her earlier, Dawn. Um, she started with me in November and she has been a lifesaver, just needed to say that. Um, because of my time with the board and experience reconstructing the investigative unit, I'm able to share my historical knowledge regarding educator discipline when needed. The investigative process includes not only the board and the IU, but also the Department of Public Safety, the Department of Education, the districts, other licensing agencies, and the public. These entities reach out when there's educator discipline issues that need to be addressed, and I work with them in finding solutions. Then we write procedures to implement the fixes when needed that affect all agencies that are involved, um, including the IU and their processes, so we'll update processes when needed, um, when it works at the other agencies. I've been working with the Department of Education and DPS directly for several years to ensure the information sharing between the agencies continues to work for everyone involved. ADE houses all of our educator information. So they have the names, addresses, phone numbers, their certificates, their work history. That information is pushed to our database, so we have that good working relationship where they, they share that information. DPS houses all of the fingerprint clearance card information and criminal history information, which they push into the certification database and is then pushed to us. And DPS also gives us paper copies of all that as well. So it's a big multi-agency involvement there. Um, other licensing agencies will reach out to us for disciplinary or investigative information, and Dave and I split that responsibility. I focus my, my time on disciplinary actions and records related to that, and Dave will focus his time on the investigative stuff. So if someone needs help with investigations, they need more information on that, which goes back to the districts. They will, especially right now, they're looking at offering new contracts. They'll call us and ask us for information because they see the banner that alerts them that someone's under investigation. They can now call because we passed that, and they can get that information from us, we can share that. Excellent. Um, P-PAC is the hearing body for the board. So, again, when I started in the board in two thousand fourteen, we had one P-PAC that had seven members. Now we have three P-PACs that have nine members. Um, each committee has a superintendent, a governing board member, a charter representative, a principal, an elementary teacher, a secondary teacher, and three lay members, one of which must be a parent with a child enrolled in a K through twelve school. P-PAC conducts the hearings on contested cases. Those are cases that either we could not offer a settlement agreement for, or the person refused a settlement agreement, or it just needs to go to, sex offense cases, for instance, never are offered a settlement agreement, they always go to a hearing. Hearings involve the P-PAC members, a hearing officer, myself, my assistant, the state's attorney, the chief investigator, a court reporter, and the respondent with their counsel if they have an attorney. As the hearing body for the board, the P-PAC hears all the evidence and testimony of a case during the hearing, and then establishes a finding of fact, conclusions of law, and a recommendation for discipline for the board. And that's where the P-PAC's process ends, they're no longer involved up there. So this slide demonstrates the life of a case, how it comes in, where it goes, who touches it, and how it happens. Um, so cases are reported to the investigative unit through one of the many ways we discussed earlier. All the FCCs are processed by Wendy, who was mentioned by Sean earlier, and all the complaints are processed by Stephanie, and she opens the cases and handles the preliminary paperwork for the cases. Dave will open and assign the cases to investigators, that's his full responsibility to do. He determines who will get those cases, that kind of thing, what category they are, we keep track of that. Um, investigators then send a notice of investigation to the respondent, which includes directions on how to respond to the notice and affords them the, the opportunity to participate in the investigation process. Dave will then review the case when it is sent to them by the investigators. Once they're finished, he reviews them, they then are sent to me, and I review the case for completeness and jurisdiction, then meet the states, we meet with the state's attorneys, the IU and the executive director, and we together will review past board history and determine how to handle a case and where it should go. But that means we'll decide at that point whether we can offer a settlement agreement or should go to a hearing, what options we have. And occasionally cases are closed at that point with no action when we determine it's not necessary. Um, Dawn and I then prepare all of the packets for the P-PAC, we provide them to the members and the respondents and attorneys. Oh, I'm sorry, I need to back up. So if we decide that they need to go to a hearing, they, no, I'm sorry, same slide, but if we decide they need to go to a hearing, then all the, all the documents go to the attorneys. The attorneys then draft those complaints, or they draft the settlements, they, they do all the paperwork and send it back. At that time, Dawn and I prepare everything together and we send it out, and we serve it on everyone that needs to be served. So we send everything to the P-PAC pack, or members, um, the hearing officer, the respondent, and then we hold the hearings. Um, after the board adjudicates the case, which, when you see your P-PAC packets in, in Simbly, that packet contains everything that was involved at the P-PAC hearing. It has the complaint, it has the findings, fact and recommendation that they gave, the transcripts and all evidence that was admitted. So that's everything that they saw, you're seeing as well. Once you adjudicate the case, I then write a board order and send it to the respondent, and the IU will enter discipline into all the relevant databases, which includes NASDAQ. So when you guys say all states and territories be so notified, that's what that means. Okay. And what's new? So Sean mentioned that I'm brilliant, but I just want to say that Dave and I are a dynamic duo training team, and we've gone around the state for the last several years. Um, you know, the investigator just came over to the board, and even when he was at the department still, um, he was my lead investigator when I was the chief, and so we have a very good working relationship. And he's kind of funny sometimes, so. Um, but I'm especially proud of a presentation we just did at NASDAQ in October. We were able to take a victim who, um, was a survivor of grooming off your high school, and we took her and her dad and Dave, who was the investigator on the case, and myself. And that gave the, the members of NASDAQ the ability to hear the story from all the different perspectives and then ask questions of them to learn more. And it was so well received that we are now going to be doing that same presentation at the Arizona School Safety Summit next month. So I'm very excited about that. Um, and it's taken some time and dedication, but Dave and I have spent the last four years presenting on educator discipline entry, reporting, mandatory reporting, and I'm pleased to say that most of the districts, I want to say about ninety percent, now have a very good grasp on how they report discipline, who they report to, what should be reported, what shouldn't be reported. And we've implemented a very good process in that, um, so they can report it straight through the department's database, and that comes directly to us. So it's much easier for the district, they now get a receipt basically that says you've reported this. So if we ever come back and say we didn't get it, they're able to say they showed it to us, kind of protects both sides. Um, moving forward, Dave and I will be doing more trainings and presentations. We're meeting with the department this week about mandatory reporting. Um, and we will be working with Shannon to create the content for the public that addresses educator misconduct in a proactive manner rather than a reactive manner. This will include videos, one-pagers, and resources that will be put up on our website for everyone to access, and it will be free. Um, Sean was able to have a meeting with the Department of Child Safety about the IU being able to access information about um, people who have been under investigation, and like the final letter, whether that was, you know, whether they let it go. That turned out very well, and they've actually asked to do co-training with us. So we're gonna be looking at doing some of that with them. We'll be looking at opening rulemaking to clarify some issues around the non-certificated individuals this year, and we're currently working on an updated discipline matrix that was previously approved by the board. The new matrix will be robust and was originally created in two thousand sixteen. Um, so look forward to seeing that, it'll have a lot more information on it and options. So that will help us stay consistent in our recommendations and our discipline moving forward. Um, and, Dr. Clay, Jessica and I are currently working on um, pulling information and a report for you and for the other county superintendents, which I'm really glad that you're here, because she asked me the other day what, what we thought we should put on that, and I said, we just needed to ask. So with that, I don't have anything else. If you have any questions, Steve and I are both available to answer them.
Any other, any questions?
I just have one really last question.
Please, yeah.
Thank you so much for this presentation, um, I have a brother-in-law in Washington, so I'm very grateful for all that you've done and, um, especially staffing your team with really highly qualified individuals. Um, just curious for my own personal reference, do you have any stats or keep track of, and maybe you don't, the percentage of, um, reports that are received? I guess they go to the department first, and then they get sent over to you, whether it's more parents or families reporting versus the schools?
So one of the slides actually showed that, so, I mean, I don't have the percentage, but let me clarify the process. The process, they send those complaints to us directly.
Okay.
So they don't go to the department, the complaints come to us, and I can safely say that the districts report much more than parents, if that makes sense.
Yeah, a lot more. Thank you.
Dr. Corr, um, Superintendent Orms of the Board, if I could add just a couple of small pieces. Um, we're very excited about that, that in proactive approach.
Yeah.
Uh, to, uh, we actually will be revising the state board webpage, uh, website over the next month. Um, and so there will be now this hub for resources to prevent educator discipline issues. And again, as, as Garnett said, we will be, uh, working with a number of other agencies to make that a very robust, uh, option. We're also gonna work closely with, with you and with other, um, uh, heads of universities and, and teacher prep programs to have them share these resources with their students as well, so that, um, the goal obviously is to prevent these issues from ever occurring, and the hope is that, so, you know, now so prevention is worth a pound of cure. Um, and then one other piece, um, the department launched its Empower Hotline, uh, last Friday. Uh, was it, oh, yes, uh, two Fridays ago, maybe?
Right.
Um, and, uh, that hotline is related to issues of content or what is taught in the class. Um, we received calls immediately from superintendents across the state asking, oh, is this the hotline we now call for educator discipline? Um, so, uh, to help clarify, we reached out to the department, and I want to give a, a big shout out to Sid Bailey from the department who met with us the next business day, um, and brought his entire team with him. Uh, we wrote verbiage for that, uh, Empower Hotline that has now been added to their reported message, their script, and their webpage to make it very clear that, that there is a separate, um, process for educator discipline issues that is separate from the department's hotline. Um, and then, uh, we're working with Doug Nick over at the department to also do a blast out via email to make sure that that is understood, that those are, are two different, uh, reporting mechanisms. Um, because, you know, and we've had these discussions with the department and, and who've been very amenable, of course, that our job is to prioritize safety, you know, and so we're always going to prioritize any issues of sexual, you know, physical violence, substance abuse, those kinds of things. And so, um, and so that's, you know, and, and just one last shout, if you'll permit me. Uh, the investigative unit, the enforcement action, action team, these are people who've dedicated their entire lives to protecting others, and they do a Herculean job in protecting kids, and, and really no amount of thanks is enough, but I, I just want to thank Dave and Garnett and the team especially.
Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Director Ross, and, and on behalf of the, on behalf of the board, oh, on behalf of the board, I'm gonna turn it over to Member Katniss.
Thank you, Dr. Corr. I just have a question, has there been any confusion with the two different lines, I guess, since it's been open, if we could go?
I'm sorry, has there been any what?
Confusion, like, ha, has there been any reports to the Empower line that shouldn't be going to you because?
Yeah.
Because that, that's obviously a huge concern for safety needs to, you know, get the right channels.
Uh, President Corr, Superintendent Orms, Member Katniss, I can feel that, um, for Garnett. Uh, we, that is a, a very big primary concern for us, which is why we met the department so quickly, and I, I should have mentioned this in, in that, uh, discussion. Uh, our concern is that everyone at the department who's answering those calls and is answering the phone, make sure they understand mandatory reporting law. So Garnett and Dave are actually going to the department to train every one of their team that answers the phones, but actually also all of their associate suits, because at the end of the day, uh, anyone involved in that program who has a certificate is absolutely required to follow mandatory reporting law. So we're, we're, we're taking preventative measures, uh, we have heard from the field. Uh, we have heard from the field that there has been some confusion, which is why we're working with the department to help clarify as much as we can.
It just seems like that's extra work for you guys.
It's uh, we, it's, it's work that the, again, the department has been very amiable to, to working.
Well, thank you for what you did.
And Dr. Core, I did have a question actually before we move on.
Yeah, sure. Who, who is it?
It's Julia. Yep. Um, thanks for the presentation. Um, one of the questions that I had is actually from a school administrator for perspective. We will get emails that are kind of like a status change to the fingerprint clearance card that come from the Arizona Department of Public Safety. Can you just tell me about how kind of those emails that are sent to schools, how that aligns with some of the work that is occurring here? And at what part of the process do those types of emails go out to school leadership?
Sure. Uh, Dr. Core, member Meyerson. So when I was talking about the Department of Public Safety and the fingerprint clearance cards, the way that process works is so the, let me back up. The districts put in all their information into the Department of Education database. Once a year. Um, they send me a list of the contacts. And there are two people in that list that are then, I then compile a separate list of two people, the superintendent and the HR director. That list is sent to the Department of Public Safety. That's who they are legally required to notify when there's a change status. So that they, they send up um a blanket email and it just kind of has the number.
Well, many times a day, often, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. And so it's, it's kind of confusing. So then what happens is Wendy, who's the admin in our office, she then sends out an email that's, that is not so confusing. But she sends that out to whoever the last listed employer is in the database. So um, that then you, they'll get another email from them. Basically what that means is that educator, their card has either been suspended or revoked. They've been arrested. And so there's been some action taken on that. And the best way to handle that would be to call the department or call us, the investigative unit. Or send an email to the investigative unit asking for clarification on that change status and we will give that to you. You have the right to that information.
Got it. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you again for the presentation. Uh, thank you, Dave. I appreciate uh, all your work and the work of your, your team. Uh, again, no greater responsibility than keeping your kids safe. So thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate it.
Can we move us on to five D, uh, which is presentation and discussion of the development of an Arizona portrait of a graduate. Uh, Director Ross.
President Core, superintendent, board members of the board, uh, we are very excited to introduce this initiative formally in this board meeting. Uh, this is a project the board has been discussing, I believe, since its last retreat uh, under the previous board staff. And the goal of the project is for this board to build a profile of an Arizona graduate, which includes a focus on academic, civic and workplace skills. Uh, the profile will be developed in conjunction with stakeholder input from students, teachers, schools, parents, ESA families, higher ed, business community, industry. Once completed, the profile of the graduate will provide a north star for the board. The guidance work, especially if it relates to the board's purview over academic standards, graduation requirements, a direct accountability system. In today's presentation, uh, our own Jessica Mueller will discuss the developmental process used by other states. Some common elements that exist amongst portrait of graduates across the country and actually within Arizona. Uh, and a possible timeline. Now, as this is the initial step in the project, we are seeking feedback from the board. Uh, solely on the plan for development, we will seek guidance on content at a future meeting. So today's really just about how you all want us to develop this. And so I'm going to kick this over to Jessica.
Absolutely. Thank you, Detective Director Ross. What this consists of is research from some organizations such as the NASSC, the National Association and State Boards of Education, Education Commission of the States, Excel and Ed, mothers like the Tell for Kids and Knowledge Awards as well. As well as uh, resources within the states and localities on their websites and in some of the nonprofits that have helped to network in those states. Uh, it's meant to show the content aspects, the developments that went into the portraits and profiles, not so much what the principles were behind those. So first we have the Y. Um, as a member of the public comment stated, this is a focus on the holistic view of what schools are preparing students for, including and beyond core subject areas. And recognize how schools prepare school, uh, students for the skills that they need to be successful. And so the emphasis is really on including that core subject area as well. What, what we found is that there is a common thread that academic mastery is essential and viewed within these principles too. Uh, in those states that developed a portrait, they do harvest that within that portrait that is emphasized and worked. So this is a little bit of the phases. Uh, there could be other phases that you've identified. These could be not relevant to you as well. And that's kind of the feedback that we would love.
Jessica, you've. Yeah, I mean, just.
Oh, my Zoom crashed, so it's gonna take a second.
Okay, alright.
This happens sometimes in board meetings, but usually they've never been noticed. So I mean, I think Melissa took over as a host.
The board members who are virtual, just bear with us just a moment, this is. In our system now.
I'll go back for a second to the slide, just if I get a chance to um, look over it once more. But as I've been saying with the phases, there could be other things you identify that we would love to hear as well. Uh, the first phase that we identified was just research phase. So look at what are the current statutes and rules that maybe fit with um, this portrait of a graduate. As Sean stated, the um, standards as well as the minimum graduation requirements. There could be other things as well. There could be things to identify um, and engage with, uh, the equal as well to discuss anything. Um, recent outcomes for Arizona's graduates is an important part of the research process as well. Um, this could also even include high school seniors and how they're feeling prepared um, at this point to move on um, beyond high school. We want to speak as well with the people behind Arizona Congress Leader, which would be Education Board in Arizona. And identify any of those current numbers that they're using for some of these indicators that um, overlap with some of these portrait of the graduate elements. There are also reports from other agencies and nonprofits on the workforce and civic engagements and other aspects that are engaged with uh, this profile of the graduate. Um, there's also national research that um, we would love more feedback on how to engage um, with other states and localities. We do have some districts in Arizona that are also have developed their own portrait of a graduate at this point. They think it's very important for us to include them as well as the higher education institutions uh, on the preparedness that they're seeing students that come to them. The next stage would just be begin those discussions about the content, as Sean stated, the, the principles that are representing the knowledge, skills and dispositions that high school graduates should possess for success after graduation. Most states have five or six or a couple who create these kind of bigger envelopes and then they stay like five or six within those. Um, so it's really dependent on what the board finds in their research and what they're doing from stakeholders, well as priorities and policy. Then it is reflected in policy and practice and there, there's a lot of connections that are made. Um, it's an intentional vision for where the policy would go in the future to um, move some of these things um, and builds the success for uh, the high school graduates in Arizona. And it's, it's not just developing what isn't there. It's reflecting what is currently that whole journey of student development and what students are coming to the workforce and college ready for. That is making them successful in those places. What are they noting that these are the things that did help prepare me? These are the things I'm seeing that my students were prepared in. Um, and how that can often be reflected in the portrait of a graduate. We have stakeholder engagement. This is one that really is not its own separate phase. It's continuing throughout the whole and it overlaps with everything. Um, it's simultaneous and ongoing through the development and implementation. Um, some states focused on engaging witnesses that are not likely to be hurt usually. While others started with the students and recent graduates and can be other stakeholders based on what they said. It's an iterative process that continues to unfold. It's discussion with each and new opportunities to engage stakeholders. On the implementation phase, this is when the content is really been developed. This is what the portrait looks like. And then it's looking at what are the things that we need to, to implement that portrait into either our graduation requirements, where are the resources to build capacity in the field? Um, that we might already have with nonprofits or people who want to engage in that work with the state board and other education stakeholders. Uh, states then later on tend to look at the evaluation and measurement if they do at all. It's not um, a common thread in each of the states or localities. What was common was just prioritizing the flexibility for schools in implementation in these portraits of graduates. These are some of the ways that other states have measured um. Either state accountability systems, if these formative assessments uh, in their schools to just build that into the practice of, of what they're preparing students for, as well as um usually state education agencies developing rubrics for the competencies, which are typically called any number of things, traits, domains, competencies. What are those knowledge skills disposition that's what I'm referring to? And they'll have model rubrics for, that are provided to school districts to uh, utilize um as they're um, building out their curriculum. There's other stakeholders that might collect feedback through surveys as well as just those continuing discussions with employment, post-secondary and military opportunities. And the timelines, which really is quite dependent on the direction that the board takes. Uh, while stakeholder engagement intersects both phases, as I said, it's common to gather feedback once the plan and principles or traits are developed. To see if it fits with what the prior stakeholder feedback had believed. Uh, the more robust the earlier input, the theory would be the portrait is good fit for Arizona students and the implementation phases are often developed on um, dependent on which policies, which strategies are used. So the development really depends on that uh, the plan and principles. It's really reliant on that stakeholder engagement. There are some states that they're listening to more than over three years. There are some states that could be round tables and focus groups and it was a little bit shorter for them. Um, closer to the six to 12 month range to really build out what that portrait looked like. And then that solicitation of feedback on um, the portrait is, can also just depend on what you did earlier on with stakeholders. And planning implementation is frequently very ongoing. I think um, South Carolina began, there were twenty thirteen and they're still very much leaving at the early implementation stage right now, a decade later for them. So um, it depends on what's included in the portrait um, to drive that timeline. So I spoke about some of the common threats. The focus has always been on what can, what uh, what reflects what's to anything to be successful after high school graduation. Usually aligned with workforce, post-secondary institutions, military service, civic engagement. Um, it's comprehensive and elaborate strategies to engage stakeholders, usually from period diverse settings. Um, I alluded to the offering of mom rubrics for traits and domains. And that academic mastery is usually included as a domain. There are some differences. Some states will develop those rubrics and competencies at grade level and some will think of it more as grade level span. Um, some will help districts develop formative assessments to reflect those profile principles. And other states will embed the profiles within their board goals or state legislation. So something like a graduation requirement has been reflected in some states. So the next steps here are um, to use this as an avenue to collect input on how to develop the plan. Uh, what are the expectations and how can we help you be prepared to um, continue in this work and in performing this work? And um, build an opportunity for stakeholders to address the board, the public comment as well. Um, if this work is uh, then launched. The plan will uh, proceed, be developed. So these are just some questions that I thought I'd bring together, but obviously there's other things we've read and thinking as well. Um. So it's uh, having thought about this vision of policy before, what intrigues you about a profile or portrait of a graduate? Um, who would you recommend including or what phases maybe were reflected in there that you would recommend including? And are there any other inspirations that you would like to have addressed?
So uh, President Core, superintendent, board members of the board, thank you so much, Jessica. Um, again, and Jessica, I love the questions Jessica added at the end. Um, you know, what we'd really be seeking feedback on today is the understanding that the, you know, for the most part, this is a multi-phase process over the course of, you know, one to three years. Um, I know um, not disparaging our colleagues in South Carolina.
Right, right.
A decade in, yeah, we all gasped a bit. Uh, so uh, you know, just getting your feedback on the fact that this would be a multi-phase process with multiple iterations of stakeholder feedback and, and you know, the, the idea that the uh, stakeholder feedback would exclude some of those focuses, groups that Jessica mentioned. And um, is this in the scope of what the board was looking for? We'd love feedback on where the board was looking for this to go.
Uh, thank you so much, Director Ross. Uh, member Clark.
Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation, Jessica. Um, one of the things I think that would be really helpful in the considerations, reflections, considerations of things to address. Um, I would love more transparency about like the different organizations that have been involved. I know that different states have taken the terminology portrait of a graduate in different directions and some of them have continued with that language. Some of them have called it something different. The main reason why I'm bringing that up is I did a little bit of research on one of the organizations that you mentioned, the Tell for Kids. Um, that was, I think this was their original portrait of a graduate. It was kind of like their original idea or part, they're part of a group. Um, and I was personally concerned about the things that I saw on their website. Um, I looked at like their main kind of report about aligning the education system. Um, and they talked about their visionary report portraits, their portraits of report. And when I printed that report off and looked at it, um, there were things in it that talked about, you know, their kind of main focus um, that they want to have. And one of them was um, that all the units should be developmentally appropriate and touch on multiple forms of oppression, including race, religion, gender, sexual orientation. You know, socioeconomic, all these different things. And as I read through the document, there's lots of other things I highlighted um, that were pretty concerning to me. Um, and so I think that sometimes it's hard to find this stuff. Um, and it's hard to know what different organizations kind of, you know, put their thumbs on the scale, developing these kind of things. And so I just think as it relates to stakeholders and transparency, you mentioned those organizations, but as much transparency as we can have around those groups, so that Arizonans, if Arizonans decide that they don't want these things that have been part of these reports included, that we know and that we're aware. And I think that will also help stakeholders realize um, hey, this may have started as something somewhere, but that's not exactly maybe what Arizona or the board or other stakeholders want to be a part of our process. I don't want people to feel like this is some sort of backdoor way that things are being implemented. So just, yeah, any, any way that we can just have really clear lists about the organizations that are involved in the feedback.
Member Clark, uh, President Core, superintendent, board members of the board, thank you so much. This is very valuable feedback. Uh, I know in looking at some of those organizations and other states, we were looking at, at models um, and, and not content, but that's, it's still, it's a great, it's a great piece of advice because even when just looking at like a, a model, we have to be conscious of who we're looking at. And the, the goal uh, which we would love to hear from you all is really that the stakeholder input is pointed inward at Arizona. So the, the stakeholder input really wouldn't involve national groups other than just looking what other states have done. Always thinking like, oh, what did they do? Is that interesting? Uh, but, but really focusing on, you know, Arizona workforce development, Arizona military. So yeah, thank you so much. Excellent feedback and that's something we will be very, very conscious of.
Other, yeah, go ahead, Dr. Clay.
President of the board, you know, I am always in, into including as many people as possible, validating the educational system because we are an educational ecosystem. I would like to see um, some sort of macro, and I know this sounds really crazy, but it does work, some sort of macro survey that, that you put out to the whole state with two questions. And I, one of the reasons I like this, in, in my county, we have um, round table once a year and, and I ask, what are your five top education concerns of the county? And I'll give them 25 things to look at and all they have to do is check five boxes. And then from there, we take, we, we take all of that information, take all of that data, we share with each other, we come together. But one of, one of our, one of the reasons why we do so well is because we first look at the macro. We, we, we look at all stakeholders and then everybody will start coming out, moving westward. Like um, we definitely need ABA, you know, Arizona Business and Education Coalition, you know, Dick Foreman and a whole lot of the people who Like um, we definitely need ADECK, you know, Arizona Business and Education Coalition, you know, Dick Foreman and a whole lot of the people who. They have the same passions that we do, but I would rather start big. And then all those organizations who have our same focus and our same passion, they're going, they're going to naturally. Come forward and say, I want to be a part of, but if we out to the whole state, this is what we want to do. Here's a two or three question survey, very, very quick. What do you think? You know, and we gather that information first because I know we all have great ideas. Okay, but we have to validate every single person in our educational ecosystem. And we cannot focus on one group, this group, no, it's everybody. Should be a part of this if they want to. If they, if they say no, that's fine, but we want to give everybody an opportunity, you know? People in a nursing home, you know, people, uh, you know, everybody. I always say nursing home, I don't know why, I probably got there one day, okay? But, and I want to be included when I'm in a nursing home, but you know, everybody in the educational system needs to be validated. This is how we move westward as far as education. So if we can start there, you're going to get everybody coming out of woodwork. Saying, I have these ideas and before you know it, you're going to have all these amazing committees and all these amazing ideas. So um, that's one of the things I'd like to see.
Did, did I see your hand, member hit? I do see your name. Go ahead, member Kervikis.
Thank you again. I apologize for my voice. Um, I've had the pleasure professionally to work with quite a few states that have adopted something similar to the process um portrait of a graduate. Including South Carolina and Idaho and in Utah. And um to member Clark's point, because I think it's a really, really important one. In my experience, which of course has not been every single place in the world, it's been more about process than content. Which is why the states um and locals that I've seen adopt something similar to it. Again, process, portrait of a graduate is just a name. It can be lots of different things to your point. It's, it's, it's kind of to member Clay's point, it's about bringing everybody to the table and coming up with a common vision. And that's why it's not in statute and that's also why um defending my South Carolina friends, why it's, it's not that it's taken so long is that it's iterative. And it's continuing to get feedback from every um part of the state. But the one things that really impressed me apparently, especially with South Carolina. Is um, and I've been to their, you know, their legislature to testify regardless of what the topic is. The conversation always be like, how does this further our vision? How does this further? So it's really has become their north star. Um, including Utah. I will say part of the reason it can't be flexible is because it's not in statute, which is a good thing. Um, it's not in cement. Two, um, the downside to it is, and if we go deeper into it, if the board chooses, I will say. One of the reasons why our accountability system has been so content focused is because it's easier to measure. And the other things are much more difficult to measure and that's where a lot of these states have gotten. I wouldn't say hung up because I know especially Utah, they're really making great progress. That's a difficult conversation. So a lot of this came up even before COVID. Um, where states were really trying to wrestle with, how can we not just have a common vision, but. Measure things outside of, quite frankly, math and ELA in eight grades and a graduation rate. And last, I think it'd be really important for us to know, and thank you, Jessica, for all your research, is how many um. And I don't know how we would do it outside of a survey, but I think it'd be good to know how many. LEAs here in Arizona have already adopted one because I think we'll have a delicate balance. To start having some kind of a state vision conversation while you're still respecting local control. Because the visions for are, are going to differ by community and that's absolutely appropriate. So I think that's something good for us to see is. How many uh districts and or charter schools have already adopted something similar? And again, they've called it very, very many different things, but it's really a strategic plan or a, or a vision for the school district or the state. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Number Meyerson, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, and, and Carla, maybe this is actually a question you'll be able to answer, but, but Sean, I guess maybe to direct it to, to you is, I, I am curious like how kind of a portrait of a graduate. Aligns to something like an accountability framework or uh an ADEF letter grade. I think, you know. Obviously, there's so many still challenges across schools, whether it's the teacher shortage, whether it's still student academic achievement. And so just sort of wondering how. It, you know, if we were to pursue something like this, how the work of that also just, I think I mentioned this too, Sean, when we chat, but like that it doesn't sit on a shelf. Uh, somewhere and it, and it truly is used to potentially drive student academic outcomes, addressing teacher shortage or other things that are obviously like so critically. Um, a challenge right now um across our schools.
President Corr, Superintendent Horn, um, Member Meyerson, um, so one of the things in um our research that we have found are, are ways that other states have. There's a range of ways that other states have, have implemented um their uh portrait of a graduate. And it ranges from uh building competencies on holistic skills that they'd like to see in a graduate. All the way to um, you know, writing it into, to statute or into rule. Um, the one common threat is that when driven by their state boards of education. They've served as the frame by which they've examined the issues that fall under the purview of the board. So like A through F standards revisions, those kinds of things. Um, having that, that consensus and that common north star, that common understanding. That has been built over time to the portrait of a graduate, then shapes those further conversations and decisions. So there's a, there's a um. Sort of there's that piece where it's applicable and then there's places where it can become even more applicable, which is where we would look for board guidance. You know, as, as we start building in the, the development of this system. Um, and then starting to, to remember Kervikis' point very quickly. Um, we have looked at the schools that have adopted portrait of graduates and I believe Jessica included two examples instantly. Uh, Mesa Public Schools and Sunnyside, uh, both of which are, are real exemplars of what you'll find in the state and, and two very different communities. So we thought they would be representative, um, you know, there's many more, but we thought that would be representative for you all as this first step, but. Um, definitely, Member Meyerson, that discussion um is part of the, the, this developmental process that will take your feedback for, go back, build out more and then bring back to the board for uh for, for their guidance.
Got it. Yeah, I really liked that analogy, Sean, too, of just like this would be the north star through which we would make decisions or through, which would help guide decisions. I think that that. Um, especially as we potentially think about like very robust and immediate issues that I think we're, we're all here to address around teacher shortage, academic uh gains, et cetera. So I appreciate that. Um, thanks.
Any, any other thoughts or comments?
Just a quick, I just want to reiterate, thanks, Dr. Corr and Member Meyerson. I appreciated your summary of. Um, Executive Director Ross's comments. When I think of a portrait of a graduate or whatever Arizona decides, if it goes in this direction, wants to call it, is. That framework of what is an A? When our kids graduate and they come from a letter grade school, that's an A. What does that mean? And can they go and be successful in business? Can they be successful in post-secondary? Can they be successful in a trade program? Can they be successful in our military? Right now, as it was addressed earlier today, um, individuals say, you know, Arizona ranks uh X number out of fifty states. Um, I want us to be in the top ten and not the number one. And I want individuals when they come to Arizona, because it is a land of opportunity, because it's a place where you can start something from nothing. That you are equipped to be able to do so because you have, you're rooted in the English, the math, science, et cetera. And you're able to apply it in a way that matters and is meaningful. So when I think about. This phrase and um, I know I'm guilty of using it a lot, whenever we go, I want it to be like, what does an A mean? So that when, you know, a year from now, when we're doing letter grades. And I'm like, why on earth is this school getting eighty-three percent and that's considered an A? Um, so I, I, that's my, I, I'm enthusiastic that we are beginning this process. Um, I love uh, remember Dr. Clay's comments about engaging members from across our state. Just a few things I wrote down is. District charter, private schools, urban, rural, suburban. Certainly our teachers, leaders and superintendents, parents should be at the top of the list because ultimately I feel that they are the. Child's first and best educator. Um, I think business industry should absolutely be at the table. Military, we do have military bases throughout our state and I think having them uh be able to share their insight is going to be really, really important. Um, certainly our public and private and community colleges in the post-secondary space. Um, and certainly, you know, elected officials want to come, they can come too. Um, but I, I, I just appreciated Dr. Clay's um short survey and think I, how we get to all of those individuals. I have no idea. Um, but I, you know, I, I want Arizona to be at the top and um. We've seen so much growth over the last decade and I think it will only continue. But I want to be able to attract the brightest minds and ensure that those kids that are starting with us, regardless of their background, that they have those same opportunities.
President Corr, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, Vice President Haley, thank you so much. And uh, I would add also that we will, of course, be reaching out to our five nations. And, and be sure that you have a, a full representation and, and so that is actually the exact feedback we were looking for, that, that if the board is on board, is on board, sorry, I'm late today. With a robust um and iterative stakeholder process that involves stakeholders, you know, P twenty across the state. Um, as you said, schools at home, educated in the home, private, uh, public, you know, charter and, and um. And so that's, that's in line with what, you know, the research that Jessica put together and huge shout out to Jessica as, as early as always. Um, and we will take this all back, um, put together some more concrete plans and then bring it back to the board for more discussion.
And so that's great. Any, any thoughts to the contrary? Hearing none, I'll move us on to, and thank you, Executive Director Ross, moving on to item E. Presentation and discussion regarding legislative affairs. Uh, the board may take action to support or oppose or remain neutral on specific legislative. Uh, proposals, Director Ross.
Uh, President Corr, Vice President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, I would like to say, Director Deputy, Director Wonders, of course.
You, uh, President Corr, Superintendent Horn, uh, members of the board, thank you very much. Uh, this is our legislative update. Uh, since we last talked a few weeks ago, we're starting to get into, in theory, what should be the back half of the legislative session if it stays seventy or seventy-one out of a rumored one hundred days that they say it goes for, but I think I can say. Um, we're coming up on the end of committees this week, should be the last week of committees. It's possible that they may extend by another week as well. Um, in terms of some of the bills that we've been having some more in-depth discussions on, I think maybe two issues to bring um folks awareness. The first, one of our discussions around a bill that was amended to make some changes around the kindergarten entry assessment. Uh, this came from uh legislation two sessions ago that had come out of some of the boards working, the K three literacy ad hoc. Um, having a stated by kindergarten evaluation tool. Um, the legislation proposes to have local selection for either statewide adoption tool or locally approved tool. Uh, some of the discussion has centered around the value of statewide data from a singular universal tool. Um, as well as discussion around the kind of implementation role of the existing tools of the tension that's been going on in the field. Um, so we've been engaged uh with stakeholders and focus on, on that piece. Um, again, trying to uh continue to bring back some of the discussion from that K three literacy ad hoc. Um, and the value of having universal data to support effective for literacy decisions. Um, the second bill to highlight to talk about, um, I'm sorry, that was amended on House Bill twenty sixty, uh, the second bill, Senate Bill fourteen twenty-five. Um, which does directly impact the board. This bill was amended over um on the floor and the Senate has made it open to the House, but it's not yet on an agenda. Um, and it puts in statute um some graduation requirements. Uh, currently, the board is charged with adopting graduation requirements that includes twenty-two credits. Um, this bill would put in statute some pieces that are already in place. So for instance, making American history and American government required. Um, those are both already part of the credit requirements. However, it would require that the board take some action to increase those credits to full credit each. Right now, it's one and a half credits combined. Um, so that's a bill that has not popped up on the agenda, one that we've had a fairly robust discussion on and speaking of the bill sponsor. So then those are the two pieces that we wanted to highlight for this meeting. Happy to answer any questions from, from board members or. Talk about anything else in the direction of the president.
Thank you, Deputy Director. So at, at, at this point, your sense is we should continue to monitor there's not today required or requested board to get action at this point, just to clarify. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Deputy Director Wonders? All right, we, we, we all have hope for a hundred day session. It's still possible. It is still possible. Thank you so much. Uh, so then I will ask the indulgence of my colleagues and we'll try to uh just kind of plow through the rest of the agenda here. Uh, and uh. Item six, uh, this is time to comment. Item is on the consent agenda portion of the enforcement actions. Uh, and all speakers, as is uh our protocol today, will be limited to two minutes. Uh, Director Ross, do we happen to have anyone who would want to chat with us? President Corr, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, I'll just. Okay, thank you so much. Then I'll move on uh to the consent agenda. And uh it would be my desire to take this consent agenda item as, as a single motion. Um, but you'll certainly have an opportunity to pull one off if that's the desire. Um, so is there a desire to peel away any particular case from the consent agenda? Uh, seeing and hearing none, um, then I will uh seek a single motion uh to approve items seven A one through seven A eight. As well as seven E one. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Uh, Member Clark, thank you. Do I have a second? Second, uh, Member Ken East, thank you. Any, any discussion? Comments? I see all cameras on. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Passes. On to item eight. Uh, this is the time to comment on items on the general session portion of the enforcement actions. And all speakers will once again be limited to two minutes. Director Ross, by any chance, do we have anyone who wants to chat with us?
President Corr, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, we do have one, uh, Clay and Karen. Okay, very good. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Dr. Corr, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, I'm counsel for Karik Parisian, which is the last item on your agenda. Uh, we just wanted to note that we agree with uh P PAC's recommendation. Uh, this was a case in which uh while there were some missteps. Uh, we did uh provide a significant amount of evidence of the steps that Ms. Parisian did take as to this child. Um, and we also noted in the ensuing three years since the incident, she's received a significant amount of training and education. Uh, it was particularly compelling to P PAC uh the progress she was making as a developing teacher. She actually turned over all of her evaluations. Uh, from beginning until uh present that they were able to consider as part of their, the factors. Um, they felt that her overall development and performance was significantly mitigating in the case. Uh, in addition, they found no aggravating factors and a number of mitigating factors, including a good faith effort uh to rectify the error here. Uh, so we do believe that the recommendation strikes a balance between creating an appropriate record through P PAC. And also documents the board's concerns, uh, but it also has an element to providing some additional training to Ms. Parisian. So we would ask that you do accept that recommendation on the last night.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience waiting out.
Of course.
Uh, so then I will move us on to um item nine. Uh, this is the uh negotiated settlements agreements. And once again, if it meets approval of, of the board, I'd like to take this with a single motion. Um, do I have a motion to approve items nine A one through nine A four?
So moved.
Uh, Clark, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, that was close. I'm going to go, remember Haley, just, she likes to see your name in the minutes. So, any conversation, discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving item nine A as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. A motion passes. Going to move us on to nine B. Um, and uh this is the presentation, discussion and possible action on the findings of fact, conclusions of law and the recommendations of the professional practices advisory committee to revoke. The license of who named Amos case number C. Two zero, two zero, two zero dash zero zero, one, one, eight, six for a period of five years. Do I have a motion to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law and the recommendations of the P PAC to revoke all the certi- certificates of who named Amos? And that all states and territories be so notified. Do I have such a motion? Do I have such a motion?
Sub moved.
Member Katniss, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Member Haley. That was unfair, but, um, any, any discussion or comments? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed, same sign. Thank you. I'll move us on to 9C. A presentation and discussion of possible action on the findings of fact, conclusions of law and recommendations of the professional practices advisory committee to revoke the certificates of Damon T. Pedersen, case number C2021000221 for a period of five years. Do I have a motion to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law and recommendations of the PPEC to revoke the teaching certificates of Damon T. Pedersen and that all states and territories be so notified? Do I have such a motion?
Sub moved.
Uh, Dr. Clay, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Member Katniss, thank you. Any conversation or discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 9D, presentation and discussion of the possible action on the findings of fact, conclusion of law and recommendations to the professional practices advisory committee to issue a letter of censure with the condition, with conditions to Carrie Lynn Parisian, case number C202000492. Do I have a motion to adopt the findings of fact, conclusion of law and recommendations of the PPEC to issue a letter of censure to Carrie Lynn Parisian, with the conditions of successful completion of a professional ethics course within six months and that all states and territories be so notified? Do I have such a motion?
Sub moved.
Uh, Member Katniss, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Dr. Clay, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, uh, item 90 as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Very good. Then I will, uh, remind us once again, uh, as I move on to, to, to item 10, uh, that we will have a, a special board meeting on Thursday, March 30. There will be no votes taken, uh, but it will be, uh, dedicated to the issue of the ESA handbook. And then our next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, uh, April 24th. Um, I would, uh, ask that we, uh, today we started at nine and, um, that seemed to work out for everyone. Uh, we'll do a quick poll of members, but I would like to see us move to a more regular cadence of nine AM meetings. Uh, those, those here in person, that seems to work, well, uh, those of you virtually will, will reach out and, and from that, that'll work for you. Um, but I, I think we need that nine on the 30th, and let's plan on nine for April 24th, too. Uh, for those of you not feeling well, please feel, uh, feel better, get better. For those of you traveling, uh, safe travels. And, uh, without any notion that anyone has anything for the good of the order, I will adjourn this meeting at 2:34 and with thanks to all that participated.